Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the July 10th Select Board Meeting to order. I don't believe there's any changes to the agenda, so we'll accept that and move on to announcements.
Thank you. This meeting has been video and audio recorded. We're going to have a little Fourth of July follow-up from some of the town departments that are involved. Public Safety, Police and Fire, I'm not sure we actually have anything from Fire, do we? A little, and Public Works and Culture and Tourism. Maybe Police, Lieutenant Klinger is here, congratulations by the way. Lieutenant Klinger was recently promoted. And the idea here is to go over sort of exceptional things that happened in Fourth of July, whether good or bad.
Sure, thank you. Hello, and basically, obviously, Fourth of July, we know was a very nice day. The beaches were completely full. And it was mainly surprised of families, some small groups, but very orderly throughout the day. Fortieth Pole saw a large increase of vehicular traffic early. So we had to shut that beach down to vehicular traffic, because it was pretty much full. So that diverted a lot of people over to the Cisco Ladies Beach area, which again, were basically small groups, very orderly, and everybody was having a great day. As it relates, we had fifteen mass troopers, I'm sorry, seventeen Massachusetts State Police Troopers who came over to assist us. And their mere presence alone has a lot to do with the initial involvement of people sort of behaving themselves. Also, this year, we had five arrests on Fourth of July, and only three were related to the actual police detail. Compared to in 2018, we had eighteen arrests and fifteen were part of the police detail. So that's, you know, quite a decrease in arrests. And again, that also goes towards, you know, the state police, the Sheriff's Department, DPW, Health Department, everyone pitching in to make everything work. And everyone was very orderly, and it was a very nice day.
Chief Murphy?
Good evening. Just to give you an idea of what we did for the entire week, I kind of went back to last Friday through the Sunday. For that entire time, we did about 153 calls for service just for firing EMS. Seventy-seven fire calls, which included sixty-four alarms, a building fire, a car fire, two lockouts, and an airport alert. So we did a lot over the course of that week. From Thursday to Sunday, the busy weekend, about just shy of half of those were the total calls for that entire week. The, through that course in time too, we had twenty-two incidents, or twenty-two times, we had two incidences at the same time. And we had seven times where we had three calls going at the same time. So that really stresses our staffing model at that point in time whenever we do multiple calls. And then in addition to that, we had our fire prevention officers out doing occupancy checks throughout the week.
Chief, was there, compared to last year, about the same?
About the same.
Okay.
Oh, and we won the water fight on Main Street too.
No, you didn't. Culture and Tourism, or maybe, yeah, okay, and then Public Works.
Janet Schulte, Director of Culture and Tourism, we had a great day on Main Street. I want to say thank you to all the volunteers, to the DPW Fire and Police, who were a great help in making sure that that event comes off. And David Sharp did a super job again, setting everything up and getting everybody organized and recruited. The water fight was almost a forfeit, but the Boynton Lane reserves showed up. And I have to say, sorry, Chief, it was a stalemate, we're going to have to do it again next year. But the best news, besides all that fun, was that there were no water balloons on Main Street this year. So that's a message we have to keep up. I might have seen one shot. People stopped people coming in with water balloons, but there was better signage. And we did the same campaign that we did last year, and it really proved off. So last year, we reduced it by seventy-five percent. I thought we might see a bit this year, but I'm so happy. Children's Beach had a lot of kids at the races, and PJ Moody performed at the bandstand in the fireworks. There was a little threat of fog around five o'clock, because apparently the South Shore was foggy. But where I was, it was bright clear, so we went with it, and it was a beautiful night.
Janet, I think we were going to, I don't know if we're going to plan to do it tonight, but we were going to talk about whether or not we can go back to the Fourth for fireworks?
I've been told by the department that they're ready to go back to the Fourth for the fireworks.
That's the big question.
Okay, so I don't know if we want to maybe put it on an actual agenda, or if you just want to give your sort of endorsement tonight for the Fourth, and we'll try to work it.
If all departments are thumbs up, then we have the resources.
Great. People will be very happy about that.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Depends on what day it falls.
It's Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
No, the Fourth is a Friday next year.
Friday.
It's a Friday?
It's a leap year, it's on Saturday.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
So it's a Saturday?
Fourth, the Fourth was a Thursday this year.
It's a leap year.
Oh, jeepers.
Well, from a, I'll speak of them, from a business perspective, splitting them up and putting them in the middle of the week has made the whole, like, weekend to weekend substantially busier. If we push it into one weekend, I think we will be pushing a lot of the visitors into that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We'll push them into one weekend instead of two. Now, you can choose that, but I think what we've done has been, has had an added impact on businesses here.
Positive or negative?
Yeah, I think it's been a positive impact by splitting it up, I really do.
In this case, man, I think if we, it'd be Saturday or Sunday, so it'd still be the weekend. But I think if it was...
It would be, but we picked, we picked the days. We were picking the days when it was Monday, Tuesday, we picked, you know, Tuesday, Thursday. And we split the, we split the activities up for, you know, and we can talk about this in a meeting, I don't need to go on, but we've split the activities up for, you know, so that we could take care of the beaches. But I think it had the unintended consequence of being positive for island businesses. We've had about a ten-day holiday for two weeks, two years in a row. So anyway.
I think it partially just depends on people's travel patterns. When it's midweek, they take the whole week. When it's not, they, they take the weekend. And I would imagine that people will get the Monday off. So it's probably going to push things into the following week this coming year, that the Monday would be their holiday day. So pushing it back to Friday, with turnover day being Saturday, I'm really thinking aloud here.
But we can have it as a topic, I just think it's something to be thinking about, because it's...
I've been asked repeatedly, particularly by year-round residents, please put it back on the Fourth as soon as you can, because that's the day many of us get off, and we've got to work all the other times. If we want to have it as an, I mean, I'd put it on the Fourth now, but if we want to have it as an agenda item, we can.
I'm okay, I'm good with making it an agenda item in case there's anyone else that wants to chime in. Although I would lean towards, if, again, the department heads are fine, then leaning towards the Fourth. But I think it could be merit a discussion. I also just want to say thank you so much for the efforts on the water balloons.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
I just want to make sure I got that in.
Well, and Florencia takes the lead on that with her public outreach campaign too. Thank you.
Good evening. Rob McNeil, DPW. Also want to echo the thoughts on the water balloons. To thank you to Florencia for the public outreach. It's great to have limited cleanup when it comes to picking water balloons up out of cobblestones. Downtown went very smoothly for DPW, and thanks to David and Janet for their efforts and support. Nobodyer trash, we're seeing a trend, a downward trend, which has been good, providing the facilities out there to dump the trash, keeps the beaches very clean, and we're seeing less and less use, or use of the material, but just not as much volume as we've had in years past, which is nice to see. On the flip side, we've seen tremendous volumes in town, and then particularly associated with the fireworks at Jetties. So next year, we're going to take a different approach, and we're going to be putting dumpsters, labeled dumpsters down in the area to handle that evening's activities. Because right now, we end up with, even with a late pickup, that extended staff into, I think like 12:30 a.m., the next day was just dairies that were overwhelmed. Other than that, a smooth week. Thank you.
Thank you all, everybody did a great job. The next board meeting is Wednesday, July 24th, as the board is on its summer schedule. That's it for announcements.
This is the public comment section of our agenda. If anyone has anything they'd like to say that is otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. Hearing none, we don't have any new business that I'm aware of. Approval of minutes warrants impending contracts?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Approval of warrants, payroll warrants and treasury warrants?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Is there any questions?
I don't have any, I have one thing I'd like to bring to your attention, is a creative and interesting contract. The Public Works Director is going to explain it. It is the contract with Goatin' Around, goatscaping.
Sure, thank you. So this contract with Goatin' Around is basically a test pilot operation that we're going to test up on Pulpus Road. It's essentially, it's, the term is goatscaping. And essentially, penned goats work the area between the bike path and the road, six at a time, six penned goats. They work in a, it's an electrified, a solar-powered electrified fence, and spend twenty-four hour cycles in that area. And as they eat the vegetation, the owner then moves them forward. It's a pretty simple setup. They've already been using this around on some private properties. It's a new business from a recent college graduate from UMass Amherst Entrepreneurial College. So it's nice to see that she's here on island and sort of bringing back, actually, if you look around, you can see some of the old goats being delivered by boat to the island to do their thing, and goatscape. So we're hoping to use this relatively inexpensive solution to opening up some of the vistas along the bike path, in a hope to defoliate some of the thick vegetative brush between the bike path and the road to open up some of these sight-distance vistas. And it's again, it's a pilot, it's going to be essentially, starting this Monday, it's planned. And it would run through, I think, the second week in September. It would be a nice opportunity to see what they can do, what they can't do, and see if there's something that we bring back in future years. I know that there's folks at some of the Conservation, Conservation Foundation, Land Bank, and others that are sort of interested, but I think they also are interested to see how this goes for us. So it's a fairly inexpensive way to step in and try it out.
I think I've seen it done other places very successfully, so I think it's a brilliant way to try and get it done. And they're very effective at pulling things out as well, so.
So what's encouraging also is they eat invasives, they love Japanese knotweed, they eat actually poison ivy. And one of the concerns we have island-wide, not just DPW but others, is spreading, you know, knotweed and other invasives around the island. And so the ingestion and digestion of the seeds, I'm told, is, and the research shows that they really cut down on the amount of spread, as opposed to doing it mechanically with equipment and dragging this stuff around. So encouraged by that as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, just one quick question on the munis contract. Is 156,200, is that the yearly amount, is that paid every year? And I complained about my QuickBooks.
Yes.
That's a lot of money.
It's townwide.
Yeah, that's a lot of, I was like, okay.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Consent items, we have a gift acceptance for the salt marsh, or gift acceptances, there's a few of them.
I would make a motion to accept all gifts for their designated purposes with thanks to the donors.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests, we have some year-end budget transfers from the Finance Department.
Good evening. So as you're aware from prior years, through July 15th, we're allowed to transfer with concurrence of the Finance Committee and the Select Board, money from one budget to another to cover any potential overages. One small item before I actually start going through what they were. When you approve this, we're actually, hopefully when you approve it, it's not from general insurance, that should have actually said health insurance. So that's just one small note that we would ask that, when you, if you approve it, that you make that change. We're asking to transfer $65,615 from the health insurance line to IT expenses, primarily related to, as we've grown with the number of capital projects and the amount of work that we're doing and trying to manage them, and through various means, be it Excel or what other softwares. IT and Town Administration worked very hard collaboratively to come up with one uniform solution. It's called Team Dynamics. We decided to go ahead with the purchase, and, which is why they need another $65,000 into their operating budget to cover that movement that we did. It includes the licensing and the training, which is ongoing, and as we move forward in implementing it, which will certainly make all of the towns work a little easier and more efficient by tracking them in this software. The plus expenses that we're asking to transfer of $31,995 is, as I explained to the FinCom last night, that is really somewhat of a placeholder, because the plus department gets indirect cost reimbursements for the 3C grant. And we're in the process of analyzing and doing that indirect cost reimbursement. We believe it's actually going to be enough to cover that $31,000 deficit that is in the plus expenses line. So we're asking to transfer this as a placeholder in case there is any money that needs to be done. As, if this does not need to be done, then it will just flow to free cash like it would have if it had stayed in the health insurance line. So it is really kind of just a, it's there just in the event that the indirect cost reimbursements don't come in at enough money. HR expenses, this is related to some staffing needs that we've had. We've had, we hired search consultants for them, one of them, obviously being the treasurer's position, we had a consult, a search consultant help us. Those were unanticipated, so we needed, we need to ask to transfer $19,000 into that account. Fire worked really hard to close a lot of POs, but in their professional service line, there's about $2,500 that we couldn't, we couldn't close with the amount of POs that they did need to keep open. So we're asking to transfer that. Legal expenses, if you remember at Town Meeting, we transferred about $250,000 from free cash. We had about $80,000 left right near, that's the last warrant. I actually believe that may be enough to cover it, but we're putting the $35,000 request forward in the event that there's a few bills that come in after year-end. So if it's not needed, it will simply close out and close to free cash at the end of July. Town Administration is essentially the same thing, as you know, we've done, we had the staffing study, we had some other operational reviews and studies that we've done. We had reserved or encumbered money at last year, and we had made some contractual changes, and we worked through that. While I do think that we may have slightly, pretty close to enough money, we're asking to transfer this in the event with all those changes that we needed a little bit more funding in the professional, in the town admin expenses. Again, it will flow simply to free cash if at the year-end, it doesn't, it's not needed. So all told, it's $204,660. I would like to thank all the department heads and all their staff, because they worked very hard over the last month with my staff in closing POs and unencumbering funds that they didn't need, and really did a lot of really great work to get down. I think this is the smallest list that I've had, that we've had since I've been here. So I want to thank all the departments for their work with us in getting to this point.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Valet Park of America, minor modification request.
Hello, my name is Tim Graney, I'm with Valet Park of America. I'm here for three reasons. Number one is a request for some limited overnight parking with the valet operation. After starting operations, we've come into some challenges, and I wanted to formally make a request for some of those options. I'm not quite sure if you've received the email with my official request for the overnight parking in advance. Yep, okay. The second part of the discussion will be just a update on where we are with the valet, some of the numbers compared to last year, as well as with the bag check, just to give you an update. As we said in the beginning of the season, we would. And then the last part would be to just give you an update on some of the challenges we've run into, and as well as some of the positive things we've run into. So I'll start with my request for overnight parking. There's three scenarios. One thing we didn't realize that we were going to run into was be a problem with getting equipment from the, to the downtown location, to set up and to break that down at the end of the night. So getting that equipment to and from that location was something that wasn't a problem last year, because we stored it at the National Grid location, and we're able to keep that equipment there overnight and have a vehicle to bring that in the morning. Didn't think of that with us being moved to the Town Lot location, and us not being able to put a shed behind Town Hall for the bag check. I didn't think of the equipment being moved back and forth. So I need a location to store my vehicle with the equipment in it, to get that vehicle back at midnight, and to the next morning have the next person come into work and be able to get that equipment over. So I'm requesting at least permission to keep my van overnight in the Town Lot for the purpose of moving that equipment. That is one thing, operationally, if I cannot have that, I would need someplace at Broad Street to store that equipment. The second is, we are running into approximately one to three vehicles a night being left overnight, even when we tell people that there are, there is no overnight parking options. There's some various reasons for this. One, people just don't come back for their car. Two, people come back for their car and they're too intoxicated to drive, and they ask us if they can leave it. And in the interest of public safety, we would rather have them leave it than, than have them drive home. And third is residents who go off-island on a ferry and then get stuck and can't come back, either due to weather or something else happened where they couldn't get back in time to get their car. So those, with that scenario, I would need permission for one to three vehicles to be left overnight on a basis of, we didn't plan on it, but we got stuck with the car. Because what we were having was those cars were getting ticketed by the police, and then we were faced with that challenge.
The request says up to 20 vehicles.
So that is request number three. Ideally, request number three would be what I would, what I would go for. We are getting many, many requests from people who are staying at inns downtown. Because for the past couple of years, we've been able to accommodate these people at National Grid, now there is no other plan for these people. So they would still not have access to their vehicle between the hours of midnight and 8:00 a.m., so there would not be activity in the lot between midnight and 8:00 a.m. So if we were allowed to give permission to take those cars, number one, we would be busier. Number two, we would be helping the businesses downtown accommodate a location for their guests staying at those inns or staying in the boat basins. So that 20 vehicles would allow us an option for those people, to give them an option of where to park. So I would formally, officially first request permission for 20. And if I can't get that 20, then I would need the other two options just to make this work operationally.
So I have a question on, I have a question on the 20?
Sure.
Number, how many spaces do you have in the lot?
There's 47 spaces.
Okay, so if half of them go to people who are basically parking there permanently, does that, like, if it's overnight one night, or it's overnight the time that they're there, it's staying?
Sure.
Is that, is, just, is that, is that sort of, so, isn't the idea of it to provide, you know, sort of turnover and parking, valet turnover in our downtown, not necessarily leave them there permanently?
Understood, so with that, the overnight, what we've experienced in years in the past, the overnight vehicles do turnover, they typically will be gone usually by 9:30, 10:00 a.m. They're out and about, either going to the beach, going to various places, or they stayed for one night and they're, they've moved on. We, in the past, the way we price structured that was if they didn't have their car out by 11:00 a.m., they paid another day's fees, which encouraged them to, to move out.
Do you, do you charge more for overnight, or is it the same?
We do, we charge $40 for overnight.
Yep, so it's, it's the daily fee plus the night fee?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
So that would, that would be my official request is the 20. If that cannot happen, like I said, I would, I would like permission to at least do, you know, up to four cars, my shuttle, and the, the ones that we don't expect to, and not have them get ticketed, because that is what we keep running into, is $50 tickets on the vehicles. And I think that's kind of, you know, someone trying to do the right thing, or someone who's stuck off-island with no choice. I can't make the car disappear.
Can the leftover cars be placed in the Jetties parking lot instead of the Town Lot?
They can, or the other option would be to leave them up front at Broad Street if we only did the four. Or I could do the 22 Jetties, that's perfectly fine. I can make whatever happen operationally happen. But giving an option is going to help those businesses downtown and make downtown more user-friendly.
I can, go ahead.
I got a couple, couple thoughts. I had two people who don't, last year, the last couple of years would, bartenders or servers who get out at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, they would use, you know, overnight, or they had, they had access to it, I think. Or they would get out at 2:00 and decide to take a cab home, because they got done at 2:00, and then they grab it the next morning. So that's another kind of segment of the population that would use it if it was overnight. But they won't do it if it's going to be ticketed in the Town Lot.
And the other option with, with some of those servers, what we would do sometimes is we would, either in National Grid, we'd leave their car in the entrance and bring them their keys back, or they'd have a second set of keys. So those people that were getting out at 2:00 a.m. who were working, they'd still be able to get their car out, but it was outside of the lot. Or we would leave them in our drop zone spaces on Broad Street. But when I tried to do that as a solution this time, those ticket, those cars got ticketed as well. At 2:00 a.m., you know, it was like, every ticket we got was like right at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. So, you know, I will say, I'm sure that public service were aware that we were operating in this area, and they probably were, you know, keeping an eye out for that to happen. And that's why our vehicles specifically, compared to some other vehicles, got ticketed. You know, it's a challenge, and that's all, I'm just looking to overcome it for, to come up with some good solutions for, for people using the service.
So for that segment of the population who's getting out at 2:00, they don't really need the overnight?
But what I would do is I would, with your permission, I would put those cars at Broad Street, and, you know, we would hand-deliver their keys back to them and tell them, just come get it when you get out of your shift. And that way, they're, they're out of the way, and it's a solution for everybody.
Do you want to take any comments from the public yet, Mary Azza?
Can I go first? When we, when we did the contract, we did talk about the drunk driving piece, and I actually thought that we were going to allow that, so I missed that when, when it was all written up. But, and certainly your commercial, commercial vehicle, I think, should have a spot. When we had originally talked about it, there was, the shed was going to go behind the Town Building, so that wouldn't have been the same issue. I don't think that this should be an allowance for other commercial vehicles that might be people commuting, going for the whole weekend and leaving their car. I, I am kind of concerned with the idea that this is going to become parking for guest houses that are in town. I definitely li- I definitely like the idea of it being parking for people who are working in town, who get out late at night, who, who need, need the availability of commuting when the bus doesn't run and that kind of thing. But I feel like the guest houses in town, we should, should be promoting people not bringing their cars because they're within walking distance of everything. And just providing, that, that piece concerns me. But I guess the long story short is I don't mind there being, I, I don't think that we have any reason for there not to be cars parked there between 2:00 and 8:00 in the morning. It's just sitting empty.
Right.
But those are my worries. I don't want it to be a commuter lot.
Right, and, and later.
And I don't want to be guest house parking.
I guess I can bring this up now. You know, I do want to be sensitive to the neighbors. You know, we have had some concerns brought up to us by some of the neighbors and I was planning on bringing that up later. But that's why if we were to keep a car overnight at Town Lot, I would inform the people, just like we did at National Grid, you have no access to your vehicle between midnight and 8:00 AM. There is no access to your vehicle. So that there would not be that traffic going in and out of the lot. The cars would sit there until the next morning when we opened up.
I'll take a public comment now.
Couple of comments. Mary Longacre. I, I would adamantly oppose the 20-vehicle license for a couple of reasons. First, I don't know how you can enforce no access to my vehicle. I've got a second key. That, that wouldn't be a deterrent. Second, if you're storing the vehicles, you're, you're literally storing vehicles. There's no vehicle storage. If you can keep them there overnight, it's not parking. It's not something that is a convenience for everybody who comes downtown. You know, you're talking about targeting visitors. Well, this is a town lot. This should be for everybody. You've already taken the spaces away from a number of people by assigning them to the valet parking. Now you're going to further restrict them by letting people park there overnight. It just, it's creeping along into those who have money get a preferential treatment downtown. And that doesn't sit well with me. It, it just, I mean, I pay for a garage space for one of my vehicles. Why wouldn't I choose this option? $40 overnight fee or a $50 ticket. I don't see that you're really saving that individual a lot of money by, by offering this option. And I think people who park overnight in places that they're not supposed to should get ticketed. That's why we have that rule. Why would we say to one person, "Well, if you want to pay the valet and park $40 there overnight, that's okay." But somebody else parks on the street right outside the lot, or wherever that's legal, has to pay a ticket because they parked overnight. Why do they get different treatment? So those, those are my reasons for opposing the 20-vehicle. I don't have any particular comment on the other requests. Thank you.
So as far as, as far as that goes, I will say that, you know, I'm looking to just maximize use of the space and try to provide a service for as many guests as possible. If you want me to move those cars to jetties, I have no problem moving those cars to jetties. I certainly didn't consider the second key option, so, you know, could somebody feasibly come and grab their car? If they had a second key, sure. It's not like they have them under a chain or anything like that. So if, in that scenario, you were worried about the impact on the town lot and we wanted to move those cars to, to the jetties, then we can certainly make that happen.
One thing I want to, let the select word know, I, I walked with the butters that are closest to the valet. They're about three feet, five feet from it. So I walked the whole lot with them and they were very, very nice about it and saw the bigger picture and understood it. They just said some of the concerns. One thing they said is there's less, it's not as loud at night for them because people aren't coming back kind of rowdy and, and kind of drunk at 1:00 and 1:30. It's kind of been an advantage for them. They kind of live right there. I just wanted to throw that out there. They have some other suggestions that I know you already, you already are considering.
Sure. So one of the other, you know, concerns was just where our podium is. We're in close, close proximity to a, it's an outbuilding or a second building for a property and I believe the homeowner is living in that building. And I don't know if they're renovating their, their house or if they're renting that out or, or whatnot. But, you know, I did speak to my manager, Tim, and we've moved the podium slightly away from where their house is, which is, the town laid out an area where they wanted us to greet the cars on the diagram. We were trying to stick as close to that as possible, but I think this minor concession and moving slightly away is understandable for that homeowner and we will, we will get that done. So where the blue area is where the temporary storage shed is and then another diagram right in front of there, they were, they showed a yellow box that said drop-off pickup area. So, and our, we set up our podium right outside of there. So what we're going to do is we're going to move that podium forward and more toward the red box when we can and then as we fill and if we need that spot, then we'll move the podium. But for the time being, we're going to greet cars because there's a window for that residence right there. So we're going to try to be sensitive and, and accommodate, you know, however, however we can. There was another, you know, you know, the, the other, the other concerns that we have had was we had one town resident who, actually, you know, they, they may just have had too much to drink that night and came over and were throwing their cones around the parking lot and, you know, letting us know how, that they own that lot and, you know, were upset. So there was another resident that was upset. I think it might've just been a rant. We haven't seen him back. But, you know, just to make you aware that that was a, one of the festivities one night. The other thing is, you know, we did, in the beginning, there was, you know, quite a bit of grumbling from employees who do work downtown who were used to parking in those spaces. Now, some of them, you know, would come in early in the morning and the lot would fill up a little bit earlier than they had previously. And I also had some that were coming in around 10:00 o'clock and yelling at my staff, which at that point, I hate to tell them, but that lot would have been full an hour and a half before then if we were not there. So.
It's just the visuals. It just doesn't look good.
Upgrading.
Because I, I work right there. At 9:00 AM, there's only four, four cars in your,
Correct.
in your lot. It doesn't look good. Now, this morning at 10:30, there was 15 cars and at 11:30, there was 35 cars.
Correct.
As I go back, I just kind of walk through and look and see. So by noon, it looks full and it makes more sense, but at 8:00 AM, it doesn't look good.
Right, correct.
Visually.
Correct. And, and, you know, one of the things we talked about is the moving the cars out to jetties, which is fine. You know, like I said, I would agree to do that, but, you know, there is the room and the capacity during 2:00 to 8:00 AM in the morning to handle those cars as well as until 10:00, when most of them would have left anyways. So kind of staying on the, you know, how, how the season has been going, you all received a handout about the 2018, 2019 season. I will say that on the 4th of July and on the 5th of July, we did have to shut down operations due to the fact that we were over capacity. We actually had a high point and, you know, I had said we could get 47 cars in those 27 spaces and we ended up getting 54 cars into those 27 spaces. So we filled it and then exceeded a little bit over what we had thought we could do as a maximum volume. So that was nice to see that we were, you know, exceeding that number. But on those two days, we did, you know, have a, have a great amount of volume. The downtown location has actually really been busy. And to that, that has brought some challenges to us as well. We have been using the six spaces that we needed and there has actually been times when those six spaces are full. We're waiting for valets to come back from jetties and we have other cars pull up on the outside. And Matt, you had mentioned that in the beginning, that should we have, that can't you do two lanes there? Well, and I think I had said, and I don't remember exactly what I said, but I think I, I said, yes, we can and we have, but I don't want that to be the plan. We'll have that be more of the backup. And what's happened is now we've actually, the folks that give the tickets, when we have someone do that or we have our own folks go to pull up with a car and there's no place to pull it over, they have to pull it over double, which cars can still get around. But we've then in turn gotten tickets for that and it's kind of hard. It feels almost like there's one officer that is specifically targeting our people and, and that's a, that's a bit of a problem for us. It's, makes it difficult for us to, to try to run that business. So for example, yesterday we had a Uber double parked in front of one of our cars and a FedEx truck double parked. And then my manager pulls up with a car and the officer comes up and tickets our car. So.
He didn't ticket the other two cars?
No. So it's, in that sense, I feel like, and I don't want to, that's only been on a few occasions, but I do feel like maybe that particular officer, and I can speak to someone about that, has an axe to grind.
Can I throw one thing out, manager?
Sure.
I'm fine with the valet. Like you said, valet van being there. One to three vehicles is fine. I, I understand what, what Mary Longacre was saying. She made really good points. I think we need, if we're going to take these spaces away from, like, you know, the people who want to park there in the morning, I think we got to get the most use out of this so we can show that, what it's used for. So I'm okay with whether we decide 10, 15, 20 vehicles. But if we're going to take these spaces away from the town lot, they need to be maximized. That's, I think that's the way I'm looking at it.
I'd feel, I'd feel a little better if we knew those spaces were not, that, you know, if they're, if they're overnight, I'd feel better if we knew they weren't there for three or four days. I mean, I, I sort of, I, I'm with Don on that. I feel like the idea isn't to, you know, provide a convenient overnight, three or four night parking. I think, so I, so I, I'm torn on that issue. You know, I agree with you, Jason. We should, it should be utilized. At the peak, it really was utilized. You know, the 4th of July, you guys did pretty well. One question I had, the lowered numbers, what is it doing to your viability, to your profitability?
It's hurting. For sure. This is something that, you know, I had spoken with Greg about, that we did anticipate that lower volumes this year. And I think that some of the, you know, our staff is definitely, our staffing is definitely up and our car volumes are down. So as far as profitability, it's minimal at best. I would say it is increasing though. And one of the things that we are still getting is, I had to ask, I had to ask around where you folks were. Okay, is one challenge. So lack of familiarity, lack of knowledge, the lack of visibility. Before, when we were at National Grid, you'd drive by, you'd see the parking, you'd see the, the site right there. It, you'd capture a lot of business that way. Right now, where we are, we're not visible. So I do think that, you know, I would have been foolish to think that that wasn't going to play a factor and I knew it would and it has. The other things that we have had comments from people say, "This is farther from town. Maybe I'll use the downtown stand next time instead." And that's just, you know, it is a little bit farther than National Grid was. So now with our numbers, we're seeing that the downtown stand is becoming more popular as that has happened. The no overnight, you know, has impacted our volume. People asking, "Well, I'm, I'm here to stay at, you know, this bed and breakfast or whatever." You know, and we tell them, "I'm sorry, I can't take your car if you're going to be overnight." So we've had to turn away some cars for that reason. Longer wait times at downtown, I would say, you know, we're definitely into that. Longer wait times or if a car comes out when, we ask people when they come in, when they think they're going to leave so that we can put them in the order, but if they come in out of order, then I got to move two cars to get that car out. So there's longer wait times. And last but not least, and this is something, you know, we can look at further, is there's no power at either location. So that's forced me to, I'm trying to run battery powers for our computers to run our software system so that the two stands can talk to each other and so I can track the car volume a little better by hour. But that's a challenge. Internet has been a challenge. At the Town Lot, I, we have hotspots that operated pretty well at National Grid and those are not operating at Town Lot very consistently. And so that's also forced us to not be able to accept credit cards because, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of putting this all together a little bit last minute. So no power, you know, it's tough to charge your devices and, and have, and no internet. It's tough to accept a credit card when you're, we're not going back to the old carbon copy ones, so. The, so those have been some, some challenges that we faced this year and if power was available, I certainly would be able to start to accept credit cards. That would be something that we could.
Can I just ask how often you'd have multiple night stays when you're at National Grid?
I would say the maximum we had a car was for three nights last year. So, you know, to your point, I don't want to say that I haven't had ones, twos and three nights, but I, it didn't go over that. Typically, it was a one, two or three night like, and typically those would have been, I would say at a high point, I know I asked for 20. 20 was an extreme high last year at National Grid. I would say more typically, the average was closer to 10.
10 that were overnight, multiple overnight?
10 that were overnight at, on a given night.
Okay.
So like, of those 10, I would say I'd probably have two or three that were going to be multiple nights.
I would really like to see finding a way to accommodate. I agree on number one. I think that's, for me, that's an easy yes. I would like to find ways to accommodate some of the workers in town, particularly, you know, we did have someone who reached out to us and having worked in town in service myself, you do get out at odd hours and I know they have been using that parking lot in the past. So I like the fact that you can do that. I don't know how much that impacts number three, but number two at least. How do we separate number two and number three?
How, how many people do you normally have that are in the service industry?
So the service industry cars, what I could do is just leave those in the, I could leave those in the six spaces that are up front at Broad Street. That's how I could accommodate those. Those, we, we typically wouldn't see more than that for service workers in a given night where I would have to accommodate them. So if you gave me permission to have cars there, you know, just throughout, you know, overnight, just in case they come out at three or whatever, then those would be where I would position those vehicles. And then anybody truly staying overnight or anyone who didn't say anything to us and then just doesn't come back. I mean, it's midnight and you can imagine, my guys are sitting there saying, "What do you want me to do with this car?" So, you know, what the reasoning behind that, I, I gave you some of my educated guesses and what some people have told us when they came back. And the, and, and also I did want to note that the woman who does run the ticketing program and Libby, you know, were very kind to work with us through some of those challenges and through some of those tickets. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that has been a little bit of a challenge.
Is it a problem to allow parking after 2:00 on Broad Street?
No, and I'm not really sure why they were getting tickets for that.
Okay.
We just probably need to communicate that better to police.
Okay.
I think we've been evaluating our strategic plan and it's to reduce the cars. I believe the Culture and Tourism Department has been working with Romaine to advertise not bringing a car here when you come on vacation. So I'm not, I don't think that the allowing 20 spots is in line with our strategic plan. I do see that the cars being left over, you know, people get intoxicated or they forget their car. I see a use for that, but in terms of the commercial vehicle, that's the only thing I'm having trouble. I see the use for it, but we don't want any other commercial vehicle overnight in the town lot. So accommodating this one just seems a little not standard with policy. And so that was just my kind of initial thoughts on it all.
What was the reason that we couldn't do the shed behind the town building? Was it just timing? Was it, was it a space issue?
There was, I believe, Greg, do you, can you speak to this or? There was, I believe, Greg, do you, can you speak to this, or it just wouldn't fit?
I see what you mean about that, Kristy, but I do think that we've already taken these spaces away to allow this to function, so that's already operating differently than the rest of the, the town parking lot. And I think, um, you know, there are already a couple of things going on. I, I don't have a problem in this scenario, where we've already changed things so significantly from the rest of the parking lot to have their one. Does your commercial vehicle have valet park on it?
I can put it, I can put something in the window, just something that's not, you know, I don't want, I didn't want the sides of the vans all, you know, logoed up and everything like that. It, it does have commercial plates on it, but I could put something on the dash so it identifies it as. And the vehicles that are left overnight, they, um, they do have a ticket on it with the numbers on there.
And some of the history was people, it, it was a concern that it was being a commuter lot for commercial vehicles. So it's not quite the same scenario. And that's a lot of to do, to do with why they're ticketing downtown in the middle of the night more, because people were leaving commercial vehicles and leaving the island.
Just to, to add to what you were saying, I don't know how you can decide who is going to get those spaces. If I were a contractor, you know, being able to park my van downtown at five o'clock when I send my guys off on the boat, and they come back in the morning and they pick it up, and it costs $40, sounds like a good deal to me. You know, how are you going to enforce who gets to use these spaces overnight? It's not going to be in visitors all the time. It's going to be, it's not going to be intoxicated people all the time. It's going to be anybody who sees this as an opportunity.
That was why I said no commercial vehicles besides.
Also with National Grid, we would not take commercial vehicles, so.
Even so, it doesn't have to be a commercial vehicle. You know, you, 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 you know, the Uber vehicles, for instance, $40 a night parking at the town lot is cheaper than a hotel room.
Tim, how often did that happen in National Grid?
It did not. It did not. In the two, in the five, what, five years that we were doing overnights at National Grid, it, it just didn't happen. I, you know, I, I understand what your point is, but it just, it just didn't happen. And, um, we did have some contractors that approached us, because honestly, they were saying that their people had to park way out at the airport, so it would be cheaper for them, because they come in on the boat, they have to take a cab out to the airport to get their vehicle or out to the town. And so we had businesses approaching us, and we turned them down. Because when we went in, in the spirit of the agreement with National Grid, we felt like that was the right thing, um, to do. So I, I can only give you my word that I, I, we wouldn't let that happen.
Let's go through, May.
Uh, the only thing I would add on is, um, you put this clause in the contract originally for a reason. I don't know what the reason was, but you might want to consider whatever that reason was. Why did you include it to begin with?
Well, I, I might be able to say, speak to that as well.
Oh, go ahead.
That was in the original Broad Street agreement, which was used to draft this agreement. That was not the National Grid agreement, which did allow for overnight vehicles that got used as the template. So I think it just got carried over in the template.
Yeah, frankly, I thought when we did discuss this, and we talked about, you know, the more of the, the one-off things where people don't come back for their car, or they've had too much to drink, and you don't want them driving their car. And I thought we were going to allow that, because I don't see any, this section is cordoned off anyway. There's no, nobody is using it between two and eight. And if there's no access to the vehicle, so it's not bothering the neighbors, I think that that's helpful. And if it's not commercial vehicles using it as a commuter lot, that's helpful. I don't know if we want to do some kind of a compromise, where we allow like five vehicles overnight in the town lot, and you can do the like up to six vehicles for people who are working in town. Those are people that are really important to me to try and provide service for. Something, something along those lines.
What I was thinking, sort of along those lines, I was thinking, saying yes to number one, which is having the van there, yes to number two, one of three people, uh, number three, limit it to 10 cars, and then add six cars at the town space. Like allow six service people at the town space, and maybe a couple of other service people will be in the overnight. And my rationale for that is I think part of what we're gaining here is we're gaining knowledge of what people are willing to pay, for what periods, et cetera. If we just say no and leave this empty, we, you know, we haven't really gained anything. I'm happy to see that the 27 spaces gave us 54 vehicles, uh, you know, they doubled the capacity. So we, we got a lot more volume out of that space than it would have been had it been sitting the way it was. And that's, you know, 35, 40 cars that weren't driving around looking for a place to park. If we had just said no to these guys this year, that's what would probably would have happened. You know, at peak, we would have had a few more cars driving around and around. So I, I do think, you know, so, so that's my motion, is the, what I just laid out. So yes to number one.
So one being yes to the van overnight.
Yes.
Can we say that it's marked?
Right, yeah.
That there's some, something.
Sure, if I put a sign on the dashboard that just said, you know, valet shuttle or something like that, then that would be good. I think they know which one it is.
And then, um, I'm assuming three vehicles allowed. And then.
Up to 10 overnight that he's, and then.
So you were saying essentially 13 vehicles.
And then six.
And then six at Broad Street.
They get picked up and.
Because he's saying three for number two, and an additional 10 for number three.
Up to 10 instead of 20, yeah.
And the ones at Broad Street, in theory, shouldn't, you can just drive those over, and those shouldn't be getting ticketed.
Exactly, I don't count them toward those numbers. I'm just.
Those won't, in theory, will not be left there overnight.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Correct. And, and I mean, I guess there is a chance that someone would, you know, if, if that vehicle got ticketed, and it was after, you know, 4:00 AM, you know, at that point, I think you're done working. Now, I'm not saying that it's not an employee that ran into the same thing. Maybe at the end of their shift, they, you know, had a couple of drinks with a coworker at their apartment, or, and decided to leave it. Or after their shift, when they were cleaning up. I, I, you know, if we got there at 8:00 AM and that car was there, obviously, we would do our best to move that out of there. But right now, the other thing that we're getting some challenges is, not at the downtown, but in the town lot, we'll have cars that aren't parked, that are parked in the, the area that's been designated as the valet. And then, I don't want to ask the officers to ticket those, because there is a lot less signage there than, than maybe we need. So I, I may also ask that I can work with the DPW director in getting a, a few more signs to designate that area, that that is the valet area. Because I, I think that some people may just, for lack of knowledge, not realize that. So I haven't, we've just worked around them.
Madam Chair, can I second for discussion?
Yes, thank you.
And I just wanted to say, um, just to remind us that this is a bit, this is the, kind of the best decision of a lot of, lot of bad decisions. Like we were trying to make the best out of losing a National Grid lot. And we knew it was going to be an experiment, we knew we were going to have to adjust at this time. So I think this is a good, the best adjustment we can make at this time. That's why I'm going to second it.
Is everybody ready to vote? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Matt's motion?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One request, the white cones on Broad Street. This is from a friend of mine. If you could keep those tucked in and not out into the road.
Close to the curb.
Keep them, yeah, keep them in. He has trouble navigating that corner.
You got it.
He's a little older.
Absolutely. We'll get that done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to public hearings, I'd like to open the public hearing to consider the joint utility petition, um, for the utility pole, um, on the norly side of Highland Avenue.
Good evening. Will Addus, this is a follow-on from the June 19th meeting. And we took your comments very seriously in, oh, recall, uh, in speaking with the neighbors, and, um, and especially since we were made aware at that meeting, that one neighbor was not approving of the proposed location. So we're here tonight to, one, speak to that there are some neighbors in attendance. We've spoken to the neighbors, um, and have reached, we believe, a agreeable revised proposed location. Verizon unfortunately is not here tonight. They've given us the verbal, it's more of a written approval over email. So the, the visual that you're seeing now is a plot plan, but the dots that, the blue dot is the existing telephone pole location. The red dot was the original proposed location. And then the green dot is what we're proposing as a revised location. The reason that we came to that revised location is taking into David Jarvis at 3 Highland Avenue, you're seeing a line go across the road. That's his property line, if you were to extend it, um, across into our property at 8 Highland. And so his concerns were aesthetics, um, of the pole, from not allowing him, disrupting his view of the sunset, as well as, uh, access of pulling into his driveway. So we felt, and we have an email that we've shared, uh, with him and correspondence with him, um, of his approval. He did request that we send him a certified plan. This is our conceptual plan. We have not received his reply to that final approval, um, but we're reaching to him. So, uh, anyway, we're here tonight with the revised proposed, given our conversation with the neighbors, and hope to move forward with it.
Jim?
Jim, would you be?
Jim Huxley, engineer for National Grid. I'm okay with the location.
I have one, oh, yeah. I just have one question. Should, do we need written approval for this kind of thing from Verizon? Or should we wait for that?
What I would like from Verizon, and to share with you, is a document that, and they need to, their linesman needs to provide it right away, um, so that they can go to the construction. So that is something that we need, we're definitely happy to share it with you. Their linesman is on vacation till the 11th, so unfortunately, we're not able to have that tonight. But we definitely want an official document of the revised proposed.
Sorry, did you say you got something via email from Verizon?
Uh, yes.
Do you have that?
I do.
Can I see it, please? And we talked to town council, and they said that we didn't need like any new petition, just this plan could go in the packet.
Okay. And we could just make it contingent on Verizon signing off. Um, this is, it's a public hearing, I think that.
I will note that this does say from Tom's, uh, Verizon, that, um, it seems like they are good to go with it if all the parties agree. And he'll submit it.
Hi, I'm Ginny Clark, and I'm in a butter at 2 Highland, as well as behind at 2 Northcliffway. Um, and it's fine with me to move the pole. I did have a question about the lighting, but I don't know if that's, can be addressed here, since no one is here from, uh, I just wonder how bright that light will be, and if it can be modulated. Because we see it, we're behind the lot, and we can see that light all night long in our.
The street light?
The street light. So I don't know if there's any way to adjust the lighting, or black out some of the.
It's not really part of the petition.
Part that would shine into our house.
Just, sorry, Will, can you get up? So you're on tape.
Here, but it's, thank you for bringing that up. And so we've spoken to the DPW. We understand that it's a public works issue with the street light. There's no, uh, clock symmetry or reason that we believe that the street light is on that pole versus another pole. And so we're at the discovery stage of what is the process. If neighbors feel that they want to remove the pole or move the pole.
Okay, if this is about the light, can, we can deal with that. You can come to our office, and we can figure that out with you.
Okay, okay.
It's not really part of the pole, pole move petition. So we can deal with that separately. But are, are there any other public comments before I close the public hearing? Hearing none? Close the public hearing?
I would make a motion to approve the revised location for the pole, contingent on any further approval we need from Verizon.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, that carries unanimously. And then we'll, um, we'll open the continued public hearing for the handhold.
Jim, this is you.
Yes, so, uh, we're looking to hire a contractor to install a handle right where the existing pole is. Instead of 30 feet, it's now going to be 19 feet of conduit. And we can't do anything, obviously, until Verizon sets the pole.
There were no issues with this, were there?
No.
Move approval?
But, well, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Just a general comment, can I make a general comment?
Can I make one up real quick? So I'm going to assume too, that your approvals for the last two are also conditional on the departmental comments.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and just generally, it just seems difficult to get all three different people together. There has to, I, I can't imagine it's like this everywhere. It, it's just a general comment. It just seems like it's very difficult to get one hand to talk to the other hand, to talk to the other hand, and organize it together. It's got to be a better way. I don't know what it is, but there has to be a better way. Well, whatever, it, it just, it just boggles me that it's so difficult, anyway.
But I, I agree with you, Matt, and, um, from time to time, I, it comes up during managers' meetings, everybody groans when you talk about pole petitions.
It's not even just pole petitions, it's like, it's, anyway, I, I could go on.
Let's talk about parks instead. Town manager's report?
That way.
Okay, um, just before getting the town manager's report, I did forget one announcement. We do have a waste summit tomorrow night, the 11th, um, here in this room, from 6:00 to 8:00. Public is invited to talk with town officials about landfill and other solid waste issues and the future of waste on Nantucket. Okay, Parks Master Plan. Some time ago, we engaged Weston Sampson to work with us on a Parks Master Plan. They have a presentation here, they've done a survey, had a lot of meetings with stakeholders, and informational sessions, and things of that nature. Do you want to make any kind of intro, Rob, or?
I think, Madam Chair.
So, uh, kind of a, a very brief history. Uh, when I, we first started, uh, we were faced with, uh, $100,000 annual town meeting appropriation to, uh, reconstruct the playground at Tom Nevers. And so in my short experience here, looking at the different parks, and some of the challenges and requests that were coming through the department, uh, we quickly kind of worked with the town manager to identify, well, maybe just running out and fixing a park might not be the best approach. Let's maybe take a broader approach, step back a second, and try to do, uh, an entire town-wide assessment of our parks. It was a very active and, and, uh, vocal Tom Nevers group, uh, that, that took it upon themselves to, uh, develop a lot of really early findings and, and gather input from interested stakeholders. And that really set the stage for Tom Nevers being, uh, not just the park reconstruction, but the, the facility itself, as sort of the forerunner, uh, in the entire, uh, town-wide master planning effort. And we greatly appreciated that. The, uh, the step back and sort of the town-wide approach allowed us to really take a look, and we'll hear, uh, from Weston Sampson's folks about what they found. And so now, we have a lot of data to be able to move forward with an informed decision on, uh, the future of their, uh, and future investments into our parks. But with that, I just want to introduce Jean Bolinger and Mike Moonin from Weston Sampson.
Rob, thanks very much. Good evening, everybody. So we have a PowerPoint presentation, and our intention is to run through it pretty briskly. It seems like you have lots of items on your agenda tonight, so, um, we'll err on the side of being brief, and if folks have questions, we'd love to entertain any questions that you have. And to Rob's point, we've been on the case probably for about six months or so. I think we've made some meaningful progress. And it's been a really tremendous opportunity to kind of step back and take a look at the park and recreation system here in Nantucket, and, um, identify what you have, and, um, give a hint as to what you might need in order to better support, um, the programming needs and the informal recreational needs of, of residents of, of the island. So the participants in the process, um, to date, uh, have been clearly the town. We've been working very closely with Rob and his staff and other, um, town department representatives that may have an interest in the park and recreation system here on the island. Of course, our team from Weston Sampson, and I am Jean Bolinger, this is Michael Luna. We've been reaching out to various stakeholder groups who have an interest in these properties. We've been reaching out to various stakeholder groups who have an interest in these properties and getting input from them on what they like, what they don't like, how many of these assets at these various properties. And of course, as Rob mentioned, we've had a series of public engagement sessions, several of them in this room, where we invited the public to listen to an update from us and then to offer their insights as to what we're doing, where we're headed, and what they see as being beneficial as an outgrowth to this particular study. And the basic project goals were to inventory these properties. There are 14 properties. We'll show you a map that identifies the geographic locations. To identify and confirm the assets that are located at each of these properties and the condition of those assets. To receive public input clearly was a big part of this. To establish what are some of the recreation needs on the island and the town of Nantucket. And then establish a strategic plan to upgrade existing facilities and potentially develop new recreation facilities based on the needs of the community. And additional goals, really, on the, at the finish line, so to speak, is to have a plan, a strategic plan, that identifies a series of improvements to these 14 properties that could be potentially implemented over a period of perhaps five to 10 years that deliver safe, high-performing, gender equitable and multi-generational opportunities for recreation at these various locations. And when we talk about recreation, we're really talking about passive recreation and we're talking about active recreation. So, fields, courts, walking trails, and the ancillary amenities that help support those facilities like leechers and benches and drinking fountains and the like. So, establish a funding and phasing strategy for both capital and operational needs associated with these properties. And then, as Rob mentioned, potentially take a look at preliminary designs for Tom Nevers Park and perhaps a couple of other locations in the inventory. And I won't go into a lot of detail. I'm sure that most of you folks or all of you folks are very familiar with these properties. They run into a few different basic categories, if you will. Passive park properties, which are mostly undeveloped, include Coffin and Mill and Conso Springs, trails, maybe benches, woodlands, open meadows, so on, so to speak. Active park and recreation properties include Winter Park, Nobodyr, Delta, and Tom Nevers. There's a couple of neighborhood circles that fall within the realm of the park recreation system here in Nantucket that we took a quick look at. And then clearly, there's lots of beach properties that fall within these categories. Information gathering and public input. So, I talked a little bit about need and identifying what the needs are in order for the plan to be reflective of what those needs are. And how does one come about establishing a laundry list of needs? Well, it was through a variety of means and included interviews with DPW's staff, the custodians of these properties, site visits by our team, interviews with the stakeholder groups, public engagement sessions, as I mentioned, to receive input. All in an effort to help formulate the needs assessment. So, Mike will talk a little bit about this user matrix and run through a few additional slides before we conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Gene. So, we worked with Tracy and Blair from Community Schools and got all the data we could on the field use. And then we developed these field use matrix. And the general findings from this was that the rectangular fields are overused for, as natural grass fields. You generally want to use a natural grass field no more than 500 hours a year. So, we saw some use. I'll actually go back on some of the fields in the 900-hour use field. So, this actually, no matter how well you maintain the fields or how much money you put into them, it causes poor playing conditions. So, then, general observations from all the, from all the research we did was that, I won't go into all of these, but on the overall, this is overall for all the sites, they need improved accessibility, improved and better organized parking. You need to incorporate natural play into the parks, improve drainage and runoff. And then, you need to improve turf conditions at all the fields, increase storage spaces, and then consider construction of an indoor athletic facility. There was a lot of input regarding that. So, then, we conducted an online survey. We had 139 responses. And overall, there was a lot of agreement on a few items. 94% of the respondents described the overall recreational facility quality as adequate or needs improvement. And actually, 49% of the respondents said that it needs improvement. Let's see, 40, 58% of the respondents rated Tom Nevers Field as poor or fair conditions. And then going down to the last one, just additional indoor facilities, 48% of the respondents desired an indoor facility of some nature. So, then, these are just the general things people asked for. The ones with the most responses, we provided the percentage. So, 47% of the respondents asked for playgrounds. 36% asked for a swimming pool that's not part of the school facilities. You can see the courts, tennis courts and basketball courts. Quite a few people responded more lacrosse or soccer space. And then, you can see 23% responded that they'd like to see pickleball. So, we're going to show you a few project sites tonight, just as an example of the improvements that could be made and some of the probably more priority sites. So, the first one's Fisherman's Beach. So, this is an example of how improvements could be made at the beach. So, this is the existing conditions with the parking lot up top and then the access down to the beach. So, these, this is the example of the proposed improvements. A reconfigured parking lot, more organized, amenities at the entrance, including ported John shelters, and then handicap access boardwalk down to the beach. So, then, Tom Nevers Park, here's some examples of the existing conditions. Just various photos. So, here's the existing conditions aerial photograph. And then a proposed concept plan. The proposed concept plan includes tennis courts and basketball courts in this upper corner, multi-use rectangular fields, parking in, on both ends. The central playground with a renovated support building. The renovated J.F. Kennedy bunker. And then a fairgrounds. And then access paths and access paths down to the beach. And then paths throughout, walking trail paths throughout the dunes. This is a, just another version of the similar plan with, the main difference is more north-south orientation on the courts. So, then, Delta Fields is another example we're going to show you because you may have noticed that we did not include a softball field at Tom Nevers Field. And there's one field there now that's in usable condition. So, our proposal is to shift softball over to Delta Fields and incorporate it with the Little League baseball. And here are two options on, on that project. So, then also to help alleviate the rectangular field need and also to make up for the loss of the rectangular fields at Delta. This is Nobodyr Field. So, we're proposing to move forward with some of the improvements that were already planned for that field. And it's adding another synthetic turf field in the vacant area in the upper right. And then adding parking associated with that field. And then, expanding the lower field to allow for play in both directions.
So, next steps for us is continue to develop the concept plans that we were introducing to you folks tonight, begin to establish the costs associated with the various improvements and establish priorities for implementing them, as I mentioned, over potentially a five- or 10-year period. And, is that the last slide?
I think that's the last slide.
Yeah, okay. So, I basically, it's been, it's been great for us to be out here. The assets are awesome. The facilities, I think, need some attention, in all honesty. And I think a lot of communities like Nantucket have reached a point where they're trying to provide a higher level of recreation performance within their system. And clearly, you seem to have the properties that would allow you to make some meaningful improvements and better support the recreation needs of the residents of the island. So, that's kind of where we're at at this moment in time. It's going to be continuing work. And thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you.
I just, I have a question. It looks like the dirt bike area came out of Tom Nevers, too. Did any, and no one seemed to ask for one. Is that just, was that because of the respondents that answered the survey? Or does that not get utilized?
I guess historically, that's been there. We're not indicating one in the proposed plan.
Right, yeah.
We certainly did seek input regarding the dirt bike track there. And we understand that there's a dirt bike track out past the Mauz Reese operation. That's, can serve as sort of a replacement for that. But we certainly are, we have been sensitive to making sure if we, if we were to lose an element that's part of a park, that it's made up somewhere else, either in a public or a private situation.
Another question, maybe, Rob, you might have some thoughts, too. I'm just wondering, I really like that Tom Nevers moving the parking away from the ocean. But, is there any discussion about controlling runoff from impervious surfaces? What kind of surfaces the parking would be so that we're mitigating further erosion?
So, they're showing just gray right now, which you could easily assume would be asphalt. We are taking a look at what would be the most appropriate. But, I don't think we're, we're really not at surface determination at this point. It's still very conceptual. It's, you know, for Tom Nevers particularly, it's kind of keeping with the schema of active to the north and passive to the south. And then taking a look at, sort of balancing that parking out to support the different elements that are out there.
So, at some point, that will be part of the conversation, though?
Definitely.
The only, only suggestion I have, the highest request was indoor facility. I don't think, you know, I think it should be covered turf field, like a three-quarter field or a half-field where you could play lacrosse or, you know, foote sole or whatever, something like that. But it shouldn't necessarily be heated and enclosed. It should just be covered. We're warm most of the year. January, February are cold. But even a lot of days then, if you had canvas sides on it, it would be fine for that type of use. And then you wouldn't need someone manning it and staffing it. You know, it could be just a covered facility. And I think, knowing the demographics of the island and knowing these guys are going all over the place to play, I think you'd find that thing busy from 4:00 in the afternoon to 11:00 at night if you did it right, even, you know, all through the winter. So...
There's definitely been some proposals put forth, both to the town manager and to the land bank, about potential for a facility at Nobodyr. So, I don't know where that conversation has been. Is a private entity looking for that sort of thing?
I think that they had some private funding, potentially.
But the problem that I think a lot, a lot of people make is they try to do the Cadillac and, and then when they realize it's expensive to run, it's expensive to staff. And so, I'm sort of saying, do something that would, that, you know, someone could go out with, you know, a ball and roll it out and play and not, you know, not be a, you know, it'd be something that would be utilized all the time.
Sure.
Anyway, I just think...
Throughout this process, I'd share that we've been approached by more than one person who said, hey, what about some private money coming in? And so, I'm careful to counsel and say, we've had examples of that out at Tom Nevers and some other areas as well with the Field of Dreams, right? It came, it went. And then, it's the towns to manage and operate and maintain from there on out. And we may not have, you know, that, that service level in the budget because it's been relied upon for the time it's been up and running like that with private money. So, while I'm encouraged that people are interested, I think it's not a one-and-done capital investment. It's really an endowment to run that, whatever that feature is, for as long as the town's interested in doing that. So, just one of the lessons learned here that we're talking about.
I found it really interesting, the pool request. 36% wanted an additional, like, community pool.
So, that, that came up a couple of years ago. The Department of Culture and Tourism did a survey with the town census that asked people kind of what arts and culture and also passive activities. And another indoor pool was something that ranked really high, as well as an indoor facility for running or working out.
But, was it phrased as indoor or outdoor? Or not, was it not differentiated?
You specify indoor or outdoor.
I wonder if we had a really good outdoor community pool, if there would be less call for private pools. And, and with the shark situation getting worse. If we might have more requests for that ability.
I was just going to say, we don't have a shark situation yet.
Also good, you know, it's great for swim lessons, as you know. So, with the amount of water you had or have around you, good to have.
I have heard, I have heard just very anecdotally comments on wanting another indoor pool. And I think even a little bit, if it's in addition to the one the school has, then I think, I think it is indoor. I don't know that community, I think private pools are, have their own cachet that I don't think a community pool would have an impact on.
So, there's lots of different pieces of the puzzle here. Choosing a facility to go first certainly has some implications. We talked before the meeting a little bit about, you know, not wanting to lose the usability of a particular field. If we were to, say, for instance, the scheme for Tom Nevers includes eliminating base, the softball, but moving softball to Delta permanently. And so, there's, there's sort of a lot of different moving parts that need to be figured in. And I think that will come out with the formal recommendation on how to proceed. Some of the things that we're investigating now include the debris field that has been recently uncovered back in January out of Tom Nevers. Demolition debris from the former Navy Base. We brought one of Weston Sampson's LSPs out tonight. And we actually visited the site before the meeting tonight to, you know, sort of introduce the LSP to this material, sort of get a preliminary understanding of what we might be facing. And so, you know, I think we'll make some recommendations in the coming days to the town manager on how to proceed there. But there's, there's a lot to what we're trying to do. And appreciate the good questions.
There's a fair amount of debris out there, isn't there?
There is a fair amount of debris, yes. We've confirmed that with the ground penetrating radar.
I'd definitely like to prioritize setting a plan and then figure, like, particularly with Tom Nevers, getting a new playground put in as soon as we know definitively that that's the location for it. And I am concerned about taking away softball and not replacing it. So, we just, we need to probably do some things concurrently and have some money for it. We talked a little bit, a little bit about maybe doing a CPC application for design, more finalized design. And there's not usually a ton of open space applications at CPC, so...
Have elevations been, that'll be the second step, is look at the elevations and see what would fit where.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. It was interesting, the... It was interesting, the difference from the, the Delta fields from one side to the other was like eight feet. It was a huge amount, amount of dirt, you know, it's sort of, and you don't think about it, but it's such a big area, that moving that, and the way they did it was probably, you know, sort of learned a lot. There's probably a little better way to do it. But it was substantial. And you would have stood on that one end and looked and thought it was flat.
Yeah.
You'd look, and so that's a flat field. And then you actually go out and shoot it, and you realize how much you have to do. They were there for months, so.
I have one more.
Just in terms of the whole strategic plan of parks, are you also looking at public access, like the Nerdabus getting out to Tom Nevers?
I believe that the Nerdac access to Tom Nevers is part of the transportation planners' ask, in concert with bike path access as well. So it's just a, it's, it certainly is, there's a couple schemes that talk about, or include the turnaround and with a sun slash weather shelter there. So that would serve certainly kind of dual, multiple purposes, whether it's part of the island fair, bus shelter, or just a playing space shelter.
And outdoor water filling stations with a plastic ban?
Yeah. Outdoor water is really being looked at, at all of our facilities. And I know Mark and Janet and others are working together to try to increase those. The most recent installation was out at Nobodyr.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just one, one more comment. I don't know if people are aware, I know pickle was a request, that the CPC did fund pickleball courts that are being built this coming, within this year, at the Hinsdale site, which is a land bank property. So they may not fill the entire desire of pickle, but we are providing it.
Sure, thank you.
There's a lot of old people like me.
Do you play pickleball?
No, no, I'm too old for that.
And the, the revamp of this park in terms of funding will likely end up lining up with the bike path, in terms of timing?
I don't know. We're, we're gonna have to look at that. We have quite a number of capital, competing capital projects out there.
But we can also phase, like, getting the playground replaced.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can put a swimming pool in the middle of one of the roundabouts.
Can I just, is there anybody from the public who wanted to comment on this? I know there's some people who were involved from the beginning in some of the park plannings. I'm so, Phil, there's a couple people ahead of you.
Hi, this is Beto Ruck. So I've taken a particular interest in this, in this project. I'm wondering about, specifically about the design of this. The turnaround seems to be one of the most forward point on this property, and that's where a lot of erosion is happening. So you might want to consider, you know, how far sort of down you bring that turnaround if you go there. The property that the town owns to the right of this site, you know, could potentially be a parking area. It's used right now for the, for the fair. And, well, I see that as part of the, of a town property, and I was told that it was not going to be used for housing. So I think that might be available for some of the route. And I think doing a lot of, sort of coastal planting for erosion control, or when the, when the ban goes down the ocean, that would be something that should be part of the overall plan. But it looks good.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I really appreciate that. Well noted on the, on all points, the erosion of the roundabout area, the current stopping parking area. There's been lots of discussion, just preliminarily, about working together with the housing folks to, to identify some sort of a trade maybe down the road. And, and then beach access. The current beach access is, is pretty atrocious, given the bluff conditions. And so there's been actually some discussion about the potential for sharing a formal access with the adjacent property to the land bank, to basically still provide an egress to the beach, but to do it in such a way that respects the bluff and, and really tries to keep people away from the up and down, to try to save that bluff as much as possible. So just a few added points there.
Linda Williams, I'm speaking as a private citizen, as somebody who was instrumental in getting the Parks and Rec Department established, as well as a CPC member and as well as a member of the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority owns that property that we allow everybody to park in. Be simple, the town does not own it. The Housing Authority owns it on our own. We have toyed with the idea for years to swap it for buildable land that we can then RFP out, but so far, there hasn't been anything identifiable that we could swap. But we own it, and when people want to use it, the fair asks us, and we have to vote on it. The demo used to ask us, and we have to vote on it. So whatever is happening, we have to vote on it at the Housing Authority meetings. The CPC, I don't foresee huge asks for recreation or open space, because we had a massive ask this past fall for the playground that's going in off of Old South Road that's in conjunction with the land bank and, well, is Mariah Mitchell.
I already.
And we paid for the Tom Nevers playground. And I believe we paid for Winter Park, and I believe we may have something to do with the jetties. The Parks and, the Parks and Rec was the applicant for those. The CPC can pay for playgrounds. And we could do potentially the bunker, because it's an historic site. So there's a lot of things that they can come back to the CPC for. The deadline for CPC applications is the second Friday of September for open space, recreation, historic preservation, and housing. So I'm just putting that out to the public if they want to make an application. But the town has, has made a lot of application for various aspects. We paid for the turf field at Nobodyr. But I want to get to a personal, practical use of the softball fields. We were kicked out of Sconsett a long time ago, and we went to Tom Nevers. That is a big league, mostly made up of people with families. And when they go out to play softball at Tom Nevers, the kids that go out with the parents aren't necessarily interested in looking at the softball game, which can take forever. It's slow pitch. So all those kids are over there at the playground. So along with adult softball, slow pitch softball, goes along with the Tom Nevers playground. And if you separate the playground and don't have it out there and put it in a Little League field, which a lot of us on the Little League board built ourselves, not the town, those fields were built for Little League. They were not built for the distance into the Poison Ivy and those trees that they hit it out in Tom Nevers. So you've got two practical uses. We can't expand too far at Delta Fields because of the FAA and the airport owns a lot of the surrounding land. I see that plan, and I don't think it's adequate, first off. Second off, there's no room for more parking, which is what's always a premium. They're parked up and down Sun Island Road and wandering through the trees on FAA, on the airport property. So practical use is different from what you have on the screen. I don't mind having a conversation with you privately, but I've been involved with running all the leagues involved. And I think separating the field, the playground from the, the adult softball is not a good idea. So, there you go. I got a lot of other comments.
Thank you. Maybe you can, can give them some.
And I think they did include a playground in, in the new version as well. I think that would be important, but.
Phil Gallagher. Just one small point. The pool was critically mislabeled as the school pool, when in fact, it is the community pool. And I, I in particular, really hope that, that all of you will remember that it's the community pool and not the school pool. There are, there are problems, and we all live with them, but it's crucial to correctly label it. And then, although I heard you folks say something about a track before you started really showing us anything, as a longtime track and field official, ain't no mention of a track in what you told us about. Tracks take up a whole lot of space, because you have to have the, you really want the throwing events preferably about at least a half a mile away from where, from the running events, so that you will never hit somebody with one of the implements that you're throwing. I, I wish we could have, we could have a track back again. There wasn't, there's a little one around the football field, but it's not a track, not really. Never, hasn't been used in, as one in 25 years, because that's how long I've been here. So I would like you to think about a track, because there's a lot of stuff that older folks can do. I, I pretty much made my reputation by officiating at track and field meets for adults. And so I'd love to see you look at it.
Thank you. With regard to that, we believe that, we understand the school is addressing that with a potential track coming soon. I, I don't know when that's going to happen, but that's something that the school is definitely looking into.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Worden, founder of the Nantucket Data Platform, and I'm here to report on three questions that we worked on for the town. There we go. And so just to remind you quickly, our, the mission of the data platform is to help island leaders make evidence-based decisions. And the goal is to make a community that's smarter and stronger. And when we say leaders, it's not just government. It's also business leaders and philanthropy. And we're going to give some examples of the work we're doing. And the way we sort of approach these questions, and the way we approach them for the town, is to start with a question. What, forget whether you have the data or not. What's the question you're trying to answer? Once we have the question, then it's all about aggregating data. It's trying to find reliable national data and what we call hyper-local data, and then develop reliable methodologies that you can push the data through. When you do that, you end up learning something, also known as insights. And then one of the key things is to communicate with really compelling visualizations. And then, you know, finally, as you keep doing this, you keep building this community resource that we think will become invaluable to Nantucket. And so you ultimately, the platform gets stronger and deeper. And right now, we're working on 30 questions for about a dozen different organizations on the island. And I would say there's not a major policy issue that we're not looking at. And I'm one of a team of now 40. It's pretty amazing to me, not all full-time, we probably have 20 equivalent full-time people. It's a global team, and I would say every one of these 40 people touched some aspect of the three questions that the town asked us to look at. So the three questions were, the first was, can we help with the 2020 census? The second was, the town had a financial dashboard, and could we build V2, version two of that? And the third one was, Christie's mentioned, the strategic plan. And one of the things we found is a lot of people don't read the regressions or the reports we write, but they're very interested in visualizations that people can connect with. And so we looked at how you could communicate your goals and your progress on the goals. And so first, on the census, we worked with Andrew, Leslie, and Nathan. The methodology was to look at a variety of data sets. One of the tricky things with the census is getting the addresses correct. So North Beach Street maybe, may not connect to N Beach ST or ST period. So we built an algorithm to address match. We worked with about three data scientists and a team of volunteer demographers. And the result was that we were able to add to the town list almost 850 potential additional addresses. One of our team volunteer who leads the population center at Cornell made the point that you'd rather throw the net a little wide. If you end up mailing a census form to someone who's a seasonal resident, they won't fill it out. It's no problem. But if you miss, if you're too conservative and you miss mailing an address to someone who may be a permanent resident, you miss a big opportunity. So those 850 addresses might represent 2,000 people who will not get a census form. We're going to talk about what we think you should do about that. The average Massachusetts annual funding per person is about $3,500. So if you say, let's just round down and call it $2,000. If you found all 2,000 people and they participated in the census, and you've got $2,000 per person, that's four million bucks a year, over 10 years, the time between the decennial census, that's $40 million. You're not going to get $40 million. Cut it in half. Cut it in half again. Just keep cutting it in half, and eventually, you're going to probably get to a few million dollars that the, this, these addresses represent. So the next steps are, the town can reach out to these addresses, and we've given you the names and addresses, and you can do it by postcard, snail mail, however you want to do it, and say, you may not get a census form. In fact, they probably won't get a census form. But there are other ways they can participate, and you should encourage participation among people who get the census form, but particularly, if these people don't get it, they're probably not going to participate. So there's a huge opportunity for the town to pursue. And Andrew Vorse gave us a good idea. He is an enumer, was an enumerator in another town. These folks are going to come as part of the census. They're going to literally knock on doors and walk around. We think there's an opportunity to arm them with names and addresses and maps. So you can say to the enumerator, hey Rita, when you go to Surfside, watch out. We think there are 10 addresses that aren't on your list, and you should knock on the door and see if there's someone there and leave them a form. So we think there's a real opportunity, even though the addresses can't be added to the census mailing list, it's too late for that. That ended about a year ago. We can still arm the enumerators with evidence and resources. The second question was to take the version one of the financial dashboard, which you've probably seen. Brian was our contact on that, super collaborative. We aggregated a number of local and national data sets, and we focused on the user experience. It was sort of an Excel spreadsheet that was updated by hand. It is now online and accessible. It's interactive. It's automatically updated. There are charts, there's historical information. You can look by the quarter or the year. And here's a very short video that gives you a sense. So this is online now, and you can look at local receipts, real estate or transportation. You can look by quarter or year and see how you're doing. And then you can click on any one of these buttons. So you could look at ferry passengers, for instance. And there they are, it'll tell you what happened this quarter, quarter over quarter, over the last year. And so you can get a sense of any one of those data sets described above. So here's some quarterly data on ferry passengers, and I, this was updated just, I think, through the end of June. And that was by quarter, and this is by year. And so here you go again, this is by quarter, looking at fiscal years from, and we have data going back to 2008 through, through this fiscal year. And then you can, we've added some national indicators. You can look at the S and P 500, or weekly jobless claims. Here's the S and P 500. You can look by quarter, by year, over five or 10 years. So the next steps on that are, you know, please visit it online, financial.nantucketdataplatform.com. We're going to update it for the next six months. And we're working with Brian on some really interesting innovations to take it to the next level. It's not part of our scope. We, we think we finished our scope. But this team of global data scientists are really motivated by helping communities. So they're looking at some custom indices that we're working on for tourism or employment. So we're still working on it. The work is done, but there's more we want to do. And the last question was about advancing the strategic plan, and we worked with Greg on this. And what we wanted to do, you know, there's a strategic plan that's written that many people, I surveyed people when we presented at the Dreamlines, and how many people had read it. I think one hand went up. And that's okay, a lot, and it wasn't you. It wasn't you, Jason. But it was someone in town government. And, and, and we get it, right? People really engage with the visualization. So we looked at best practices. We also looked at your questions and tried to develop data sets that could support them and envision key performance indicators. And our scope was to do mockups for two goals and data sources for two goals, but we did data sources for four goals. Again, we sort of got into it and wanted to keep going. One of the keys is, you know, thanks to Twitter, nobody wants to read more than 140 characters. So one of the best practices is to keep things brief. And so a lot of the things you'll see are pretty crisp and clear. Here, there's the objective, there's some data, and there's a description, a little more in-depth. So if you're a sort of top-line person, you can read the top line. If you're graphic, just look at the graphics. All of this data is mockup data. There, it, I got really focused There, it, I got really focused on it, and then someone said, no, 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 we don't, our job was to give you mockups, not to do the dashboards. And, and so this was all about imagining water, tracking water pollution in different neighborhoods. This looks at different habitat areas that could be affected. Again, this is all a mock-up. But you can see the look and feel. It's very crisp, it's very clean, it's very readable. And then you imagine a dropdown. This would look at Nantucket Harbor, and based on all that data, what's the health of Nantucket Harbor and what's the risk? So he's a very simple indicator showing high risk. And so that would change as you executed the dropdown. And so the next steps are to decide, you know, does the town want a visualization strategy? And if the answer is yes, then you really need some methodologies behind your goals. So for instance, one of the goals was to get single occupancy vehicles down to, I think, 4%. Okay, well, how are you going to do, what is it now? Not sure anyone really knows. There are ways to aggregate data around that. And then to track it on a regular basis, you could initiate different programs and say, well, let's try this program, and let's measure, did it go down or did it not go down? So these are great goals. The question is, how can we track progress? So we need to develop some methodologies, we need to gather data, we would gain insight, measure progress, and then produce dashboards so the citizens can see how the town's doing on their strategic plan. And just to give you a sense, one of the things that you're doing knowingly or unknowingly is you're contributing to this data platform. And we're working with philanthropies and businesses on a variety of questions, all in these areas. We're, we're doing a cost of living measure, which is actually dollar-based. So you could say in Nantucket, it's 1.4 times more expensive. What does that mean? We're very close to releasing this. I think we'll have it in the, in the, definitely in the summer, where you'll know what it costs for an individual to live on Nantucket, what if a family of two, a family of four. And you'll not only know what it costs on a dollar basis for Nantucket, but we're doing it for every county in the country. So we've had a lot of interest, actually nationally, on the work we've done for Nantucket. We've helped the airport on tourism. We figured out that the answer is Philadelphia. And the question was, where are a lot of people coming where there's not a direct flight? And the answer was Philadelphia. We know over 7,000 people came from Philadelphia last year, and there was no direct flight. So the airport's using that. We talked about the census. We're doing some work with the hospital. We've done a ton of work on affordable housing. We've now been able to characterize each dwelling unit on Nantucket as to whether or not it is owner-occupied, whether it's seasonal, whether it's part of the rental inventory. We're doing a lot of work on demographics for Remain, and you can see these other areas. And just quickly, one thing I'd talk about is surveys. We think it's really important that you develop really reliable surveys. We have a team of eight on our survey team. These are demographers, data scientists, and social scientists. We've done two surveys. The first one on the left is affordable housing. The goal was 250 responses, our stretch goal, like it was a dream to get 400. We have 1,150 fully completed surveys related to affordable housing. And we're aggregating, we're looking and analyzing all that data right now. And what the data, what the survey team will tell you is, if you look at a survey for the presidential race, and you'll, if you ever look at the fine print, they might say 525 likely voters. You don't need, we don't need to survey 17,000 people. We're way over the number, where this is not qualitative, this is quantitative. You'll be able to rely on this. Really, I think about 400. We just launched an island life survey. Why do people live here? What makes you think about leaving? What keeps you here? What are your main issues? We're doing this one for Remain. We just launched it. We already have 250 completed responses, probably more. That was a couple days ago. And my colleague Caroline has a bunch of postcards. If you want to fill out the survey, that would be great. We've translated it into four languages online, Bulgarian, Portuguese, Spanish, and English. So this is a really, really interesting tool for a variety of organizations. You know, we talked about a pool. Well, maybe we could survey around some of the things you saw and get a bigger, a bigger group to respond. And the last thing we're really starting to work on is coastal resilience. We're talking to other communities about best practices. And, you know, there's a fork in the role. You either sort of ignore it or you panic. And I think we're not going down that road. The other one is to problem solve. And if you're going to problem solve, you really need evidence before you can come up with solutions. And so we have a whole proposal that we're starting to get feedback on, but essentially leverage best practices. So we've met with folks in Charleston. We've looked internationally at what people are doing. You would aggregate national and hyper-local data, you would drive it through methodologies, you'd learn something, you'd share visualization. So you can see, this is the framework we use. And it's really about empowering leaders to make smart decisions. So imagine coastal resilience is a $100 million problem on this island, and imagine you've got $10 million from the state. What are you going to do with it? You need to figure out the priorities. And to do that, we think you really need to look at evidence and data and analytics. And, and, and that's it. You know, we really want to thank you for adding to this pool of data and analytics. You've leveraged work that Remain has done. The Affordable Housing Trust has leveraged work Remain's done and that we've done for you. The hospital, we would leverage all that other work. So it gets very efficient and very reliable, the more work we do, and you've made a huge contribution. And hopefully, we've helped along the way. And I'm happy to take any questions. Christie, you must have a question. Christie was super helpful in the early, early days when there were three of us sitting around a table, so.
I'm just very excited to see data. You mentioned with our strategic plan, we were just sitting there talking about how to evaluate it a year in, and without the data or the baseline, how are you evaluating it? And then I just kind of, as I was flipping through this, thinking about other surveys or things that the town might need is, there's a census that looks at where you work and where you live and how your mode of transportation is, and that might be something in one of your surveys that you're conducting across the island. How do people get to work? And is there different places that the nerd of bus could be stopping or bike paths should be built? And just going back to the census, I think that's going to be such a big thing to work together and get as many people to fill out the census. And like you put up the dollar amounts, keep cutting it in half, it's still a huge difference. And to use this data is going to be really important.
And just on the wave, we're doing, we're looking at a few ways to help them to sort of optimize route planning. And so we are working with them.
My only comment on the parking was interesting is, is, has to be fairly specific. It can't just be a general, oh downtown, it's this. There's certain areas that are more, you know, sort of more in demand than others. And I think those, you know, I hope it'll be at that level when you get to it, I assume.
There's a lot of, frankly, some of the work that, that the data team put together for your package, I read and said, can we actually do this? We've grown, we've grown so fast that we have people on the team that I haven't met, and they might live in Israel or somewhere else. And three of the data scientists got on the phone with me and said, we've done this. We've done this a dozen times. And there, to, to, to leverage some of that or to execute some of that, there is some hardware. There are some cameras or sensors, not everywhere. And some of them can be temporary, but there are ways to use cameras to figure out single occupancy vehicles. And those could be placed, the data can be downloaded. We're not in the hardware side of things. But we could work with a vendor, and once the data's available, we could analyze it. So you absolutely want to get specific. It doesn't help otherwise.
I think having a more engaging strategic plan would be fantastic. And I think especially for some of the things that we can measure that we have achieved, it would be fantastic to be able to share it better. And I think things like the DHCD with the letter going to DHCD regards to the getting the 20, getting safe harbor for the 40Bs. I think we've shared it in some places, but that is a big deal. And I think these visualizations are so key to that. And there are parts that are measurable, like the parking, but there's also the intangibles that, finding ways to share that. I think having the water quality, the historical data, and again, when we can see the trends happening visualized, I think that will be helpful. And the same with the financial dashboard. I think one of the conversations that has come up at some of these more Dreamland events and sort of visionary nebulous events are, what is Nantucket's next economy? How long is it construction and trades? And I think having some of that historical information might help us anticipate where we're going with that or where we could go. So I, I've been impressed with the quality of your surveys. I think surveying is such an art. So I think being able to capture how that many people respond speaks to the quality of the survey. And then having the visualizations afterwards, I think, are, are so key. So, yeah, I really like everything I've seen so far, and I'm interested to see how this evolves.
Thanks a lot. On the survey side, I would say there is art, but there's a lot of science, more science than I ever knew. And when I got a call from one of our social scientists who said, stop calling it qualitative. It's not. It's quantitative. Over 400, we can rely on it, which I, honestly, I didn't know. And, and again, it's all about questions. So if you all just think of, boy, I would love to know, then we can get the data team involved, and we can figure out, maybe you don't have that, maybe some of the data doesn't exist, but we could start collecting it, or we could buy it, or we could survey around it. So the key for leaders is not to say, do we have the data? Do we not have the? It either exists or it doesn't exist, and we're good at turning over rocks. And where, you know, Christie was there in the early days trying to find data resources. We've gotten really good at that. The question is just, what is your pressing question? What do you, where really wish you need, you knew the answer to, that would drive policy? We're not interested in being in the policy business. Our, we're interested in helping you count the chairs around the table and let you decide if you want more chairs or fewer chairs. That's up to you. We just want to shorten the time of debate so that you, we can all agree there's some objective data, and let's debate the policy, not the math. You know, you're entitled to your opinion, not, not the facts.
I, I love seeing the number of respondents to the housing survey in terms of, it solidifies to me that we're on the right track with that being one of our top priorities. Because a lot of the time, people fill out surveys that speak to, that they care about, they care about the issue, whether it's directly towards them or someone they know. They, they know that housing is still a really, really big problem on Nantucket to have that level of response.
We presented a, a draft of our work, which was about 90% done for affordable housing at the town meeting. And I think Caroline has some copies of that if people want it. But thanks to Linda and the Affordable Housing Trust for having some confidence and saying, we'll give you a chance, let's see if you can help us understand supply, which they didn't know, what's the supply of affordable housing? Demand, how many actual people need it? And preferences, what do they need? And if you don't know the supply, the demand, or the preferences, it's pretty hard to solve the problem. And we've made massive progress on that. And, and that work, just briefly, can be reused. So we now know, I talked about the housing inventory, where owner-occupiers are, where seasonal people are. Imagine that had demographics. So when the next hurricane comes, public safety could say, hey, let's look at that layer, and let's look at every house where there's someone who's over 80 years old. Because we're all going to get, you know, we're all going to be okay. But, you know, if your mother is living alone and she's over 80, maybe we want to make sure public safety checks on her. Well, we have that data, and we can put it together as a platform for public safety. It started with work the Affordable Housing Trust did. Now we can leverage it for someone else. So if we keep going, our vision is in five years, when the town makes decisions, they're going to look back and say, how did we ever make decisions before we had this data? It's sort of like, when was the last time you walked around with a map? You know, it was a while ago. So we hope it becomes so common, that the go-to is, well, what, what evidence do we have to support the policy? That's the goal.
I'll just add in, kind of what everybody else is saying, but the, so important for the strategic plan, we spent two years of digging in, long, long meetings with staff, the five of us and Jim as well. And we really dug into the questions, and we even, we have some idea of the methodology, but we don't have the data. So looking at that, questions, data, methodology, visualization, and having that data, it'd be almost, not to say that our strategic plan would be worthless, but it's the next big step. And you used the example of the lowering the single-use automobile rides by 6%. Like we, how do we do that without data? Like we all, it's driving our policy. That's, to me, that's the next step. So I like that you, kind of the way you've set it up, I under, I understand it, how to go forward.
You built a really interesting framework. So now, what, what do you do?
I love the, the piece about preferences as well, in terms of really getting a handle on the behavior of people and how to improve their quality of life, which is what we started talking about as the sort of evolution of our strategic plan, sustainability and quality of life. I like tracking the preferences.
So that work will be done relatively shortly, and August 13th, we're going to present at the Dreamland again, with a whole new group of visualizations and some interesting people coming nationally to talk about the work they're doing on evidence-based decision-making. So August 13th at 4 o'clock at the Dreamland. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want me to keep announcing the annual water quality update?
So for the past several years, town admin has been coordinating an update like this with all the departments that are, that have initiatives, programs, projects that relate to water quality. And everybody has a little bit of the role. There is a report in your packet, so we'll start with Board of Health. And as Roberto's coming up, our ultimate goal here, one of our ultimate goals is, per the board's strategic plan goal about water quality, is to coordinate all of this into an actual plan that we can track and monitor and report out on. But we're trying to get that figured out right now.
As far as our update goes from the health department side, there's three really quick ones. One of the things that we were looking at is amending the Matiket IA regulation. The regulation was supposed to go into effect on July 1st. We still haven't received any information from the landfill study that S Mast was supposed to report to us. So we did push back the implementation, at least the hearing, until September 19th. At the September 19th Board of Health meeting, we're hoping that the S Mast report will be in, and we'd be able to make an informed decision as to whether to either push it back another few months to a year, pending any sort of sewer discussion, or if we should implement it at that time in the, for the protection of the water quality. As far as the well testing regulations go, we enacted them on April 20th of 2017. That regulation has been in effect since then. Because of the testing limitations that we have, since you're only able to test the water well through our program on Tuesday mornings, we've only had 300 and, I believe it was 28, 382, and transpose the numbers, tested so far. However, we do have some good data on that. 9% of the, of all the tests actually came back for coliform, which is something really important. People need to realize that. It's actually quite easy to contaminate your water supply if you have a well. It's really important to test it. So that's almost 1 in 10 of all the private wells on the island came with, came back with a bacterial issue. 29% of all the wells that we tested came back with some saltwater, a saltwater level above the 20 milligrams per liter, which is the, what's considered the maximum contaminant level from the state of Massachusetts. Those are the two big ones. As far as pH goes, they're 18% exceeded what's called a pH tolerance. That's not immediately dangerous. All it means is that pH is either above 8.1 or below 6.5. What you'll see with a low pH is, you'll see copper etching. If you have copper tubing, you'll see that white, I mean, that blue staining on the white of your tub, things like that. If the pH is higher, it's protective against the metal, but if you have plastic pipes, you'll be degrading the pipes a little bit quicker. So it's just one of those things that you have to keep in mind. One of the things that's really important to understand about all of these exceedances is, they can all be repaired through a proper filtration system. It's nothing that is immediately dangerous to a person's health unless you don't take care of it. You can put in a carbon filtration system, kind of like a coligan system. You can put in a reserve, a reverse osmosis system. You can do reverse osmosis systems that fit under your sink for your specific water system that you're going to be drinking, if you're not worried about other types of issues. So that's just, it's moving forward, and we're in the process of writing a full well report that I'll be pushing out to the Board of Health and publishing out. Yes?
I'm just wondering, how many wells, again, we have? 382 out of how many?
Approximately 3,000.
3,000, okay.
So a lot of the well, there's definitely more. There's probably closer to around 6,000 wells on the island, but not all of them are used for drinking. Some of them are used for irrigation purposes. These, what we're looking to do is actually kind of quantify who is using these for drinking purposes as well.
And the bacterial contamination, does that have to do with proxim- And the bacterial contamination, does that have to do with proximity to septic? Or is that just something that happens naturally?
There's a lot of ways to contaminate a well. Proximity to septic is actually more a nitrogen issue than it is the bacterial issue, because the septic system is actually releasing the effluent below grade. A way to, if the well is, if the casing is intact, then that nitrogen, I mean, that bacteria won't be cutting through the casing. What actually, what you see with the bacterial contamination is sometimes they pop the top of the well to look in, things like that. Sometimes dirt will fall in, that inoculates that water, goes into the pipes, and then the pipes can end up contaminated. Sometimes if you have any sort of plumbing work, if you work on your hot water heater, that is the one, the primary source of water in your house. So if the hot water heater is contaminated, all the pipes are contaminated in the house. The way to get rid of that is you can decontaminate a well. You can, it's, there is a bleaching way, which we don't recommend, because chlorine is a persistent contaminant, but there are other decontamination ways that are more less harmful to the environment. Primarily, when we've seen these bacterial exceedances happen, we ask and we say, you know, "Did you have any plumbing work done?" I would say most of the time, it's a hot water issue. It's when they had their hot water heater, so somebody came in, opened up the heater, worked on it, whatever is in the basement or in the area, contaminated the area, and there was no flushing of the pipes done. So that's usually the primary bacterial contamination source.
Thank you.
And then the last one is really quick and simple, public beach water quality testing. We had zero beach closers last year from bacterial. We do test for Enterococcus, which is a bacteria, it's a fecal coliform. We, in previous years, we had closed one or two beaches. In 2018, we have closed none. And knock on wood, so far in 2019, we haven't closed any either. Our most recent water sampling was yesterday, and bacterial testing came back today as clean. So we're still good to go. I believe that is it. If there's any, I'd be happy to answer.
Only thing, I was just, I was looking at this report, and it's done really well for all the departments. And I was just curious, I contacted our state representatives just to see where H776 was, which would allow local control for fertilizer. We could ban them, and he, and they said, "It's not looking great." This could be years. Just, I just wanted to let us know that probably not anytime soon, at least in the next year, that we're gonna be able to ban certain pesticides or fertilizer in the near future. Doesn't mean we shouldn't keep trying.
We're still trying. The latest numbers that I received from Joanne, Jeff and I, our offices administer the fertilizer program. It is a Board of Health regulation, but both of us co-enforce. We have 414 licensed fertilizer applications on the island, which is actually down from previous years, mainly because our enforcement is up, and some people are actually contracting out their fertilizer to other crews that are well-trained, so they're not bothering to license people. That was the feedback we received on our last fertilizer advisory committee. And I think actually Jeff will be talking about that as well.
My thought on fertilizer is why are the businesses selling it? And, you know, and if we knew what they were, if they were on the website, and if we, you know, if we put them up on the camera and said, "Please don't buy this. They're being sold at X, Y, and Z", people might not go and buy it there. I just, you know, even though it's not illegal by the state, we should be able to, you know, sort of, to tell people what, you know, tell people not to buy the wrong thing. And in order to do that, you have to show them what stores are selling the wrong thing and what the wrong thing is. So anyway, I just...
Completely agree.
Rather than saying there's nothing we can do, we could, you know, we could put an ad in the paper and say, "This is being sold at this store. Don't buy it. This is being sold at this store. Don't buy it. You're harming our, you're harming our environment if you do that."
Actually, along those lines, even today, I tasked one of our interns to start creating a survey so that we can start gathering data on people who live on the island and apply their own fertilizer. Do they know the BMP? How do they, where do they know to get it? Have they seen it? And things like that, so that we can start gathering that sort of information and we can see, is it mostly the private homeowner who just doesn't know it exists? Or are people blatantly disregarding it?
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up, when we first talked about this, you know, this years ago, a couple of boards ago, it was, "Well, they just have to sell out their product. These stores just have to get rid of it this year, and next year they won't have it." And then I'm, you know, five years later and five years older, and I'm hearing, "It's illegal. Nothing we can do yet." And I'm thinking to myself, "Yeah, there is something we can do." You know, we can put, we can shine a spotlight on the people who are doing it. And just sort of, people don't want to do the wrong thing. So, anyway.
I wondered, because I think there was some discussion about the possibility of having a label for the fertilizers that were met the BMP, because I think there is some issue with you can't say, you can't buy Roundup. But you could definitely, I could see running an ad saying, "These are the ones that you can use and do use," because I think almost everywhere is selling, all the basic places where you'd go to get home and garden things, they're all selling ones that are not compliant with the BMP. So I think if you start there and just make sure people understand which are the ones, and if there was a tag on it that I think was being discussed, that would be helpful.
We have actually discussed that tag with some of our partners. We've been looking to get that off the ground. We've been focused mainly on the training portion of it and getting the videos done. Land Council was actually really generous in paying for NCTV to do all the new training video, which is actually in the, is also in the update. We'll be rolling, that's being rolled out this coming, I'm reading season.
Have those been done in Spanish as well?
We do not have them in Spanish. We'll be able to do the captioning though.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I totally jumped the gun. I had that note for you up next, Jeff. Sorry, everyone.
So I'll just add on to that really quickly for the fertilizer section that's there. One of the things the Fertileizer Advisory Committee has been talking about and looking at the fertilizer regulations through the Board of Health is finding a way, and kind of in keeping with what the state has started to require for marking products that contain phosphorus and signage that goes with it, is doing that program with our local stores to have to mark BMP-compliant products and separate by what is BMP-compliant and what is not. So when the consumer goes into the store, they can clearly see that there's a section that is and a section that isn't, and then hopefully, over time, you see a little of that public shaming that comes in to move those the other way, where someone says, "Hey, why aren't you grabbing from that bin when you can?" So that's in process. We did find out through Town Council this year that any change to our fertilizer regulation per state law now is required to go to the NP and EDC first before it goes to the Board of Health. That was kind of a little last-minute Department of Agriculture change to the state fertilizer regulations for how local places can change their own fertilizer regulations. So that is something that we have kind of finished up with the Fertileizer Advisory Committee, and will hopefully have to the NP and EDC soon, and then back to the Board of Health. So that's kind of the process for there. I won't go back into fertilizer regulations unless there's another question, but I guess if it's all right, I'll just kind of continue through our list. So the annual water quality testing and report, we just received our 2018 report from SMAST for the island-wide water quality sampling at the end of June. Roberto Tais and I have been going through that for any edits or questions or concerns or things that we've missed. We sent them some comments today. We'll hopefully have that final report back in the next couple of weeks and then have it for the public to take in and consume, but answer questions, and then hopefully set up a time to present some of those findings to you guys in kind of a short summary form at another one of your meetings. As far as the great ponds go with that, we've been kind of waiting for that last piece to make the final changes to the pond management principles that we've been talking about for about a year and a half now, and have had two public forums with that report in, and in enough for us to kind of make those changes. We're hopefully gonna line up those two things at the same time at the same meeting to get those in for your review and adoption, as well as having that water quality update. And we'll have that in the works, and that's one of our kind of initial feeds into the strategic plan goal of a 2020 water quality plan. And having those pond goals and objectives in place is very helpful for developing that water quality plan as part of the strategic plan goal. Just to run down the list, we've continued some additional testing of Long Pond. We haven't really had any significant changes. We have seen signs from the infinal work that we've done, so looking at the little critters that are in the sediments that are there, and some of the work we've done with the Pond Coalition, that that pond is starting to show actual signs of restoration. We're starting to see increased species diversity and richness with the invertebrates that are there. So amazingly enough, of all of our ponds, Long Pond is the one that is seemingly restoring the quickest. So hopefully that's encouraging. We've seen that trend kind of continue now for about the last four years. So we're hoping to do that as well. So just a quick run through the rest of the list. We're continuing to just monitor and test areas of high use, just to track if there are any changes or any significant issues with gray water or boating use. Haven't had anything overly significant come from that, but we still test. We have been working with the Nantucket Conservation Foundation to look at the windswept bogs as they contribute directly to Pulpus Harbor. We have been slowly moving backwards, farther and farther into the bogs to track nutrient flows. Recent discussions with those folks, and this is why this project is on hold. I believe the Conservation Foundation is going to be discontinuing the actual use of the windswept bogs, so they won't be actively managing those for cranberries, and that management that they'll be doing will be changing. We want to revise our water quality program for that area based upon what their use changes and their management is going to be. I know Roberto and I are meeting with Cormac tomorrow to kind of talk about the bogs in general and what's going on, and hopefully that will start to fuel that discussion for how we want to revise that program. All of our other monitring's are still in place for harmful algal blooms, whether they're in the gray ponds or the harbors. The next one, it's kind of interesting that we had the data platform here tonight, talking about visualizations. We're really kind of excited about this. We've been working with MITC Grant for about two years now on a water quality data visualization system. So what that is, is we've loaded kind of all of our water quality data for about the last decade, including last year in, and it's a completely searchable database for any member of the public. When it launches to go in, if you want to see nitrogen for a certain area, you can get that. And then there's a kind of set choice of visualizations that you want to see. See it on the map, see where it is. And you can sort by temperature, you can sort by nitrogen, you can sort by whatever field you're looking for, and water bodies and water bodies in general. They're finishing up some of their kind of last beta work onto it, and hopefully have that launched here before the end of the summer for people to use and start to see, and I hate to say, play around with all of the water quality data, but take a look at the water quality data for themselves and see what it really means and what it looks at, and start to have more informed conversations about our water quality strategies. Green crabs, we're continuing that project with the Land Council again this year to monitor what our green crab populations are in the harbor. Another study that we're working on that's kind of related to that is we are partnering a little bit, the Conservation Foundation is doing the bulk of the work, and looking at how purple crabs are affecting salt marsh dieback up in certain parts of Pulpus Harbor specifically. That's work that we're doing and are kind of keeping tabs on, but they're somewhat related. And then we're gonna continue our eelgrass mapping this season and have all the equipment in place to be able to do kind of continual eelgrass mapping ourselves without having to contract that out. That's something that, when we did it last time through DEP, we wanted to make sure that we could replicate their methodology. So instead of having to pay them to do it or get a subcontractor to do it, we'd be able to do that ourselves and just kind of a normal course of business and be able to provide that on a more regular basis. So with that, I guess I'll take any questions, but that's kind of our brief update.
That actually would be something that would be interesting to visualize on a dashboard, the eelgrass health related to all the temperature and water quality, all those things.
So I think what we'd like to do, and I think the beauty of that MIT system, is it's kind of fueled through GIS. So when we map those layers and map that eelgrass, we can import that as a data layer. So you can see that retreat, and we have those eelgrass lines and those polygons for the eelgrass that really date back into the early 2000s, and you can kind of overlay them all together and see how it's either accreted or retreated in certain areas. And then I think we'd also like to start mapping areas where, if people are doing restoration work, similar to what the Land Council did last year, and we kind of transplanted an area, be able to mark that differently, so you could see if that area was expanding or contracting over time, compare it to that, but then also overlay, you know, turbidity data, temperature data, and really start to see if there are other things other than just nutrient loading that are negatively affecting those populations. So I think that's something that we'd like to get all together. And I agree that it's a, it's something to say you're losing a certain percentage of eelgrass, but it's definitely more power of visual to see the purple line getting smaller and smaller and smaller, or patchier and patchier, to understand the, kind of the magnitude of the problem.
I have a quick question about the purple crabs, because those aren't considered invasive. Those are native, aren't they?
Correct. Purple crab are a native crab, but they're strongly associated with salt marsh dieback. And what we tend to see, and I wish Jen Carver was here, she's much better talking about this than me, but what you see with purple crabs is especially here, we don't have the level of predation that you would normally see on purple crabs. So they go through population cycles where they get very high. And when those cycles are high, they have a really powerful impact on salt marsh, because that's one of their primary food sources, is they just kind of tunnel about and muck through and get into the roots and shoots of the Spartina that's there. And without predators being around, or their population not getting to a point where it just kind of naturally declines or naturally crashes, that you can start to see significant areas of dieback when they all get concentrated. So I think that's something where they're piloting some level of control and population assessment for that. But I think that's something that, you know, we're seeing effects of marsh dieback across parts of Nantucket, and it's something where those salt marshes are so critical to our coastal protection and coastal homeability, that having healthy salt marshes and knowing how to remove one of those stressors and making sure that the Montomoy creeks stay intact and those aren't problems there, or the area up in Paco Mo Meadow stays intact to help offer that area from coastal flooding and coastal storms. Knowing that there are other things in play other than, you know, nutrient loading or runoff or other things, that there may be other things that we need to keep an eye on and monitor as well.
I have one last question. I noticed that pools were mentioned under stormwater management, and I'm just wondering if that's, if that really, if any of those changes in regulations around pools and water quality, if that covers the concerns that you or Roberto have about pools and water quality?
I think it's a pretty significant step. Again, I know Rob will be talking about that a little bit more. But I also think that, you know, the Conservation Commission just had a recent discussion where they just had kind of a forum solely about pools to kind of educate themselves and kind of grasp all of the impacts and things that we had to thought about from everything, from how pools are operated and maintained, you know, how much water is, you know, moved around and drained out from, you know, just spas that are there. And then we had people come in and say, "Hey, I drain my spa every time my renters turn over completely." You know, what's happening to all of that? And I think getting a grasp of that and conditioning those things differently. And I think the commission right now has an appetite to do a better job in getting people the tools they need to manage their pools and spas correctly and in a better way, and find things better to do with the water or find them alternatives to deal with it, because it's obviously, pools aren't leaving, and we're certainly not seeing a real downtick in the number of pools that are being applied for. But managing it responsibly and doing it the right way and making sure that there's tracking and steps in place, I think is gonna be really critical. But I think that's something that hopefully the regulations that are being developed will cover, and then things that are above and beyond that in especially sensitive areas can get handled through Health and the Conservation Commission separately.
Thank you.
Not to keep going for myself, but if Sheila had to run out, she apologized, they had a boating accident down at the town pier. And she asked if I could cover her section, so while I'm up, if I could just swing into her section, and then we'll turn it over to someone else for Harbor Master.
She didn't actually have a section. I needed her here in case there were questions about gray water discharge. You could, I guess you could cover that if you want to go to other, at the very end.
So I can just cover her really quickly. Again, she apologized for running out. But so the town pump-out program, the free pump-out that's there, they pumped just over 25,000 gallons of gray and black water between the mooring field and town pier last year. Again, that's a free service that they do, and that boat, they've upped the hours that they are operating now to a full 12-hour-a-day cycle for free pump-outs. So if you want to pump out, you radio in with your location, and they will come to you, and they'll pump out the boat that's there. They've also started to, anyone that comes into the town pier, whether they're a rented slip for the season or any of the transit's that come in and out, they provide them information on the pump-out, how to get in touch with them. And then their active crew does, active patrols both up and down the town pier to make sure no one is discharging. Or as they're doing mooring enforcement or doing pump-outs, they also monitor that while they're out there. So that's 12 hours of monitoring during the day that they're out.
Jeff, if there was a change and if the gray water was affecting the harbor, where do you, where would you see it when you test? Because you were saying, or additional 2,000... Because you were saying additional 2017 testing, but none in 2018. But you said there's nothing, nothing significant?
Sure. So when we do those areas of high boat traffic, and we used to do them a lot centered around events. So most of the testing we were doing was around like Figawi or Opera House Cup where there's an increased boat traffic in the harbor. And the first thing that we're always looking for is bacterial. So we're looking for things like fecals and other things like that that to make sure that the water is still sanitary for people to swim and boat in and do those things. But we do also in that same testing, look for spikes of nutrient input. So things like nitrogen and phosphorus that are kind of associated with wastewater to come up outside of what their normal background level for that time of year would be.
So you would know it was gray water?
We would, we would know it's something, I mean, it's a little bit kind of piecing the puzzle together. But when you have an extra 500 boats in the harbor and you got a spike outside of what's normally expected from that in the areas that you're testing, when we test not only the regular aid sites through the harbor, but in addition to in those areas of heavy use, you can kind of centralize where that is and kind of narrow down the choices. And then depending on what the species of nitrogen is, you can kind of narrow it down further from there. So it's something that we would definitely see.
Here's a question, just along those lines, how many, what's the average pump out tank?
Well, that's a really good question for Sheila.
Well, I can ask her later. And how many boats are out there with those tanks?
So I think she would have to answer that. I don't know. And she just kind of gave me the volume before she ran out. But I would definitely, I can pass it along to her and how do I get that information?
Yeah, because we can, we could back in, you could take those two numbers and back into, if we have 25,000 gallons and we have 25,000 gallon of tanks, then we're okay. If we have 25,000 gallons and 100,000 gallons of tanks, then we're probably not okay.
Yeah, and that's something too that just to not include in that, that doesn't include the figure that the boat basin handles as well. So that's a number that we've been trying to track better. I know David Gray has been trying to track that better coming off the boat basin and then using water going in and sewage coming out to kind of make sure what that difference is, but I would definitely defer to those guys for what that number would be.
Because one of the, one of the issues that I know Libby's got consultants looking at is if we have to upgrade, if Harbor Place happens and we have to upgrade, how much do we have to upgrade? How big are the pipes? You know, if we're looking out 50 years, 100 years and want to have the capacity, now's going to be the time to put that capacity in. And so these kind of discussions and actually finding, basing it on facts, you know, is important because it's sort of after the fact, you can't, it's hard to change. So this is our chance to do it.
100% agree.
Okay, Public Works?
Good evening again. All right, we'll start with a topic that's already been started here, stormwater management. We have contracted with Fussin O'Neill to begin the preparation of a stormwater bylaw. The bylaw is expected to be presented at the April 4th Annual Town Meeting. And with that, we'll be at least putting together some draft regulations. The regulations may be part of the ask at town meeting, but and they definitely will include the preliminary pool suggestions that both the natural resources and health department have put together. Stormwater pipe condition assessment continues. We finished year two this past spring. That was the closed circuit television through our tributary watershed down around the Children's Beach area. So the results are coming in and we're still working with our consultants to do, to take a look at the condition assessment of the lines that they have identified. Annual stormwater sampling program with Nantucket Land Council continues. And their focus is really the harbor watershed. Great to be partners with them. And I believe at some point in, hopefully in the near future, that stormwater sampling program and the results, participation from DPW and beyond, maybe beyond the harbor watershed will be possible to extend out to some of the other areas in town. Legal dumping and storm drains and household hazardous waste collection days, obviously connected. So we've done some changes here with the board, making commercial collection free. We've seen certainly increases in participation, which has been excellent. Continue to work with the commercial hazardous waste generators to educate them as to how they, how they can participate, how they should participate, as well as making them aware of the actual state regulations so that they're in compliance with these products from creative to grave. Now, we've gotten very good reception so far from that, that audience. We've created a stormwater projects website with Florencia. I greatly appreciate that support. So you can go there anytime and see what's ongoing within stormwater. Stormwater drainage improvements at Town Pier Parking Lot. Taking a look at that in conjunction with the across the street Harbor Master building project. So we're going to be coordinating that effort together with Marine Department. Children's Beach Pump Station, we finished a analysis of the situation down there. The contract that was just approved this evening will be the next step of that, which is basically taking a look at the entire tributary watershed, which extends quite a ways up Cliff Road and ultimately drains all the way down to Children's Beach. So I guess not too surprisingly, but still quite surprising. There's a tremendous amount of issues with the Children's Beach Pump Station. It was identified in the report that's available on the website. And the point is that we're basically going to be looking at a redesign of that facility to ensure that it's operating properly. Certainly some of the things to be taken into mind these days following the sea level rise discussions is in fact sea level rise and how that may affect renovations to this facility considering that in 2070-ish, that whole area is expected to be underwater. So some, some things to consider there in the design phase. Beyond that, we have public information sessions held in 2019, which focused on stormwater drainage issues. There's numerous, as everyone knows, there's numerous drainage issues that are historically been going on around town. The three big ones that we've been handling with public information sessions have been Somerset Raceway, Cowpon Lane and Surfside Beach Parking Lot, to name a couple. Others that are still ongoing, Lover's Lane, Okewa, Monte Hansett, the Concert Springs Project. And then we've added to that since with North Liberty Street, Lily Pond, Winter Street, Rose Lane, Hummock Pond. And there's probably a few that haven't been added there. The good news is we have engineering contracts to address the first big three, Somerset Raceway, Cowpon and the Surfside Beach Parking Lot area. Switching over to landfill, we continue our annual groundwater monitoring program. That has published reports that are available on the website that go all the way back to the 90s, I believe, early 90s. Continuation of, are expanded and not required. I put there, just to remind people that we've taken on this nutrient concentration and loading analysis to basically inform the model that Jeff was presenting earlier, the SMASS model. The previous version of the SMASS model used an extrapolation of data that was used over on Cape Cod. It was not actual data from, from here on Nantucket. So what we undertook was, at a decent expense to the town, an extension of the groundwater monitoring program to focus on actual nutrient concentrations and loads that would be attributed to the landfill to really inform that report to, as to whether, or to determine more specifically what percentage of the load that's going into Long Pond is, it could be attributed to the landfill versus septic systems and other sources. So an important distinction, I think, because of the debate that occurred before I came with regard to the sewer-ing of Maticet. So then we're working with Waste Options and Land Council sponsored projects to take a look at stormwater management onsite at the landfill site, mostly the drop-off area, the front end of the site. And the improvements recommended there will be continued and included in our capping plan. That's going to be underway soon. And finally, the dredging of Maticet Ditch and Long Pond Culvert Assessment. The assessment was done, it was reported out, it's available on the website. In fact, it confirmed Bob DiCosta's long since, you know, charge that the ditch needs to be dredged. So that was good news for Bob. I was quick to report that to him. He was excited to hear that. So in the meantime, the hazard mitigation plan has been published and part of that was to take a look at the culverts here in Maticet. So we've now taken the findings and the report and applied for a CCM grant to start to address that process. We're waiting currently for the grant decisions. And I think whether or not that moves forward, we're going to try to start to address first the dredging and then ultimately some of the culvert replacements with a eye towards access to Maticet as sea level continues to rise.
I guess one quick one is on the stormwater management. Will that include, you're going to map out which are public, which are private and what, what has to happen in each, in a storm drain? And if some of them have filters in them that need to be changed and that type of thing, you're going to get to that level of detail on those?
So with the stormwater management plan, it's really going to start with a much more general approach. So what we're talking about, the stormwater bylaw and regulations are sort of, I kind of look at that as sort of a separate thing. That, that puts in place some regulatory teeth. It starts to let people understand what truly, what is, what's affecting our, what's directly affecting our water quality and what the town now has jurisdiction over. And then the regulations to fill in that bylaw are the actual specified pieces to back up the overall goals. Stormwater management plan, I think, is a somewhat completely separate document and more in line with operation and maintenance of the municipal system. And that's going to be ongoing for quite some time as we uncover and continue to investigate our existing infrastructure.
So I guess what I'm saying, there are some, there are, there are some agreements from private individuals toward the town to do something on a certain basis, which, you know, which I'm wondering how that is going. If, if they exist, will they roll into the new rules and will they, how will they be monitored?
So I think you're talking about the potential for project-based.
There's some, some, some already have, some already have sort of agreements in place. Some are already required when they get special permits and other things.
I see what you're saying.
And so I'm wondering, you know, who's, are we monitoring that? And how are we going to monitor it and, or will it be rolled into these regulations?
Sure. So that's it. I now understand what you're talking about. So I know Mark's coming up next and he certainly has right now the jurisdiction over those systems. I think that's definitely something that we're looking at as we work together to take a look at all the different stormwater requirements. Who's ultimately going to take a look at those? And ultimately, are we going out inspecting these private systems to make sure that they're conforming? Those are all things that were being discussed, yes.
Yeah, because, and I learned way more than I wanted to learn reading about the Surfside Crossing and everyone puts in these fancy systems. But if they're not maintained, all you're doing is digging a hole and polluting even closer to the water table. So if they're not maintained on a regular basis and you don't have the, you know, you don't have the, you know, sort of the things that are, you know, the filters cleaned, all you're doing is, you know, you put this fancy system in and you're just putting it, making it worse.
Sure.
So I just think that, you know, it's part of, part of our, you know, our job as a, as a community is to, if we ask for those things, to make sure that those things are, are, you know, maintained and handled properly. Otherwise, we shouldn't have used them at all to begin with. We shouldn't have required them to begin with to build a bigger house or a bigger development or a bigger building. You know, we should have just not done anything. Would have been better than putting it 15 feet closer to the groundwater. So anyway, that's, you know, I'm on it.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, next we've got sewer and unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be, the sewer director is away. So I'm going to take you through this and I'm not going to even go through every single one. I'm just going to point out very briefly some of them. I think you all know the Nantucket Harbor Shimo, Shimo Plus Sewer Extension Project is just about done. They are very active with permit applications at the sewer department. There's a lot of staff involved in the sewer master plan and we'll have a report for you in November. We met with the Capital Program Committee in early June about some of the capital projects that are going to be coming up in connection with that plan. CCTV work is going into its third year in fiscal '20. David has indicated that we have not seen hazardous waste dumping this season so far and that might have to do with the increased hazardous waste acceptances at the landfill. However, fog, fats, oils and grease issues continue and that is a struggle that we have ongoing. Sewer and Health are working together on that, but it's, it's been a historical problem and we're trying to get restaurants to comply with dealing with it. We also see, according to David, large amounts of flushable wipes still. And as we all know, even though they say they're flushable, they really are not. So we're working on some social media reminders about that. In a nutshell, there is quite a lot going out of the sewer department. Water.
Hey, you guys, been in a long meeting. I'll try to be quick. Our testing program's ongoing. It's driven by the EPA and Mass DEP. New constituents and chemicals are added every year. We spend probably $65,000 to $80,000 a year in testing. So that list grows. The water main replacement program's moving forward in October this fall. Working with David at Sewer and Rob at DPW, we're going to take on North Liberty Street in that area and get water sewer and repair any storm drains in that area. The new goal for all of us is to work together on these projects, go into an area, finish it up and move on. Our withdrawal permit is still at DEP. We've taken some great data provided by the data platform and the census. They had us at a winter population of about 8,000 and peak summer of about 27,000. So thank you for the data. They, they couldn't believe it. It's hard to argue with though. So until we had that data, they wouldn't listen to us. Now they have it, now they're rethinking and it's looking like we're probably going to get just from that data alone, a 15% increase in our, in our permit withdrawal. We are continuing with our 3D groundwater model. The scientists like to come in the peak season when our pumps are under full stress. The expense of getting a team of hydrogeologists over here in August is getting a little too much for us. We're going to push that off into the fall a little bit. We, we did go out and put in a bunch of transducers down some wells so we can collect the data for them with them not being here and then we'll get the data to them. We have asked them to incorporate sea level rise with this 3D groundwater model. They took the last 600 years of sea level data and they've incorporated it to the current date. So it's ready to set up and move forward, making projections on how it's going to come in, when it's going to come in and how high. Just some quick stats from 2018. We pumped over 612 million gallons of water. We had 7.5% of that water is unaccounted for. What's that mean? It means it comes through a master meter at the wellhouses. And then we have all of our residential meter and commercial water meters. 7.5% of it, we couldn't, we couldn't account for it. It didn't go through the second meters. The peak day was August 5th, right during that race week. That seems to always be our, our time where we get it. We did almost 4.5 million gallons in that one day. That's two, two of the water towers on Cliff Road, two volumes. So it's emptying that, filling that, emptying that in one day. 43% of all the water we pump comes from our state forest well behind us, off Lover's Lane. And just some quick notes, some industry standard for unaccounted for is 10%. You get a gold star for your refrigerator if you're under 10%. We're at 7.5. And that, we've done some great things in the last three years. 2015 was our biggest year ever in the history of Wantacomet. We pumped 663 million gallons of water. So if you fast forward to today, and back then, we had 12.5% unaccounted for water. Jump forward three years up to 2018, we put in over 400 new services. Got our unaccounted for. for down to 7.5% and we only pumped, you know, 612 million gallons. So we pumped over 50, over 50 million gallons less in the last three years, even though we've added 400 new services.
Why do you think that is?
And I think it's the capital projects that we do, fixing the old leaky pipes. The hydrant, the hydrant project was a huge help. The hydrants were really old that we changed out. And believe it or not, the landscapers and the irrigation is a big part. The Landscape Association is a great friend of Wanna Comment. I think they're using more native plants, more drought resistant plants. I think when you drive around and you see some of these new houses and new developments, there's less plantings than there used to be. The irrigation guys are great. They're putting in the rain sensors. They're not, they're trying to make it not an option. They're just going to include it. Some people don't want to do that, but they're doing really well with that. The new plumbing fixtures, the low-flow toilets, you know, low-flow showerheads, all these new houses, every time an older house is remodeled, it's usually getting replaced with that stuff and that's where we're seeing a big, big part of it in consumer and community awareness. We're still seeing the little downturn from the sewer break, you know. It never bounced back fully from when we asked everybody to take it a little easy. We do advertise a little bit on the local radio to give tips. We're heavily involved in the school. We kind of believe that if we get them while they're young and teach them how important it is to save the water and cut back on the use, it's, it's a good thing. We teach, I teach at the middle school and the high school several times a year through the science classes. So we just try to get the word out that way. And the goal is, within the next three years, hopefully, keep dropping the water use, even though we add more. And we're hoping to get below 5% unaccounted for. And the peak day so far this year was July 5th. We did 3.9 million gallons, which was about 25,000, 30,000 gallons more than, than last year. So I don't know if the water fight lasted a little longer or... But all's, all's well at the water company. And I just appreciate all the, everything that everybody does above us, above where we live affects us. So, you know, when they talk about the ponds and Roberto going out and the Board of Health sampling all those wells, that's, that's crucial information for us to have because we're kind of, we're below everything that happens on the top.
Thank you very much, Mark. There's just a few other things that different departments are involved in. They're on the very last page here. We've already touched a bit on some of them. The Matticat Water Quality Improvement Study, we are waiting for the final report from SMN Aston. They are nagged at quite a bit by Jeff, but we just don't have the report yet. We talked about gray water discharge. The water quality webpage is up. There's continual updates to it. We're going to be updating the Harbor's Action Plan. There's funding in the fiscal '20 budget to do that. We have a coastal plastic study underway between DPW, UMass and Remain. Of course, the board's water quality goal and the strategic plan. And the water quality lab proposal. This is something that's been floating around through the Shelfish Association and the Board of Health and some of the departments have talked about it a bit. Roberto has recently given me the consultant's most recent pro forma to look at and I've made some notes on it. It does, definitely needs work. There are some, some information that we're going to need to get at. It also is going to need a town sponsor at some point. We're going to need to decide who that is. Is that the board? Is it town admin? Is it the health department? Well, I can decide who it is if it's town admin, but is it something that the board wants us to prioritize? I don't know that there's sufficient information to submit it right now as an actual project for fiscal '21 because we don't have what you normally would have by now for a project of that magnitude. So it's still in the works though and I know it's something that people want to see, but we need to evaluate what it's going to take.
And I'm just going to, until we either have proof that we absolutely cannot do it or until we have one, I just advocate that. I think it's really important when we only have 10% of our wells tested and knowing how important that information is. All of our departments that are in this report are spending money on tests and then we have all the individuals. So I do think it's possible to make it work, but we do need those numbers. I think it's really important.
Why can't we ship it to Barinstable more than once a week?
It has to do with the courier service, I believe. There has, there's, yeah, Roberto can answer that.
It's actually a schedule that they have because they're, they do the water testing for the whole Cape. Specific towns are only allowed to test on specific days. Nantucket is Tuesday. And they actually send the courier down to the boat to pick up the coolers and, and do the whole chain of custody form for us. If we were to do multiple days and that, they just don't have somebody to do that. We would physically have to go over with the cooler, put the cooler into a car, drive it out to the lab and drop it off to do it that way.
Could we pay for a courier?
No, it's all done through them. We only pay the $5 shipping.
No, I mean, if we wanted it a second day, could we just pay someone on the Cape to be the courier?
I don't see why not. It adds a little bit of cost to, per person, but it would, it would allow it for more than one day.
Yeah, I'm just, it would be really great to get it going twice a week.
I think the only other thing too, that I think is a bit of eliminating factor is that there's a timeframe on the water sample. So even if you have a second boat, it still means that it has to be tested, I think, within six hours of when it gets sent over.
The bacterial testing has to be done within eight hours of the sample being taken, which is why we pack them in ice, do the whole thing. The other parts, they, they provide, they provide us the bottles with...
I've done, I've done them a bunch of times. You have to go at like 7:30 in the morning, get the sample, get into...
Yeah, fine parking.
We had a case this, this week where she was on Esters Island and with the fledgling, with the, with the birds that haven't left, they had to get escorted through the special areas to get to our boat. And they had actually gotten their kit. They, they found an old Google document, cached Google document that says they had to bring the sample to 2FG. So they actually drove all the way out to Plus and Plus was like, no, it's, it's Chester. So she had to drive all the way back. She barely made it, made the sample time because it's just, this one day thing makes it so hard.
I think the other one, and I don't know how important it is, but definitely post-storm event. So when you have the, when there's an event and you want to be testing stormwater or wells or whatever, having the immediate accessibility to a lab, not restricted to two days or one day, means we can have more accurate testing.
Natural Resources Director has an update on sand use for projects along Baxter Road. This was a board member request for a report a couple of weeks ago.
So I'll just kind of in brief, it's something that we're still kind of actively working with where we had a report of potentially some improper sediment that was placed through the, the sand delivery area between 85 and 87 Baxter Road and some questions of debris. I won't go through the, the whole thing word for word, but we have been in contact with both the contractor that manages the GO2 projects and the folks at Netco who manage the core projects that are to the south of that delivery point and are collecting all of their delivery times, work logs, sand sources, sediment compatibility testing that they do and compiling all of that information to review exactly what happened, when it went through, whether it's suitable or not suitable. One of the great challenges in that bank is always, especially the bank to the south of Delivery Point is still actively eroding in spots from the top down. So it's very prone to old construction debris, gravel, sediment, anything that was associated with where there was development before, where the houses have been moved backwards. We're kind of always tracking that. So we're, we're trying our best to move through it and get all of that information from them. We're actively inspecting the sites pretty regularly just to make sure that's there. We've been in communication with, like I said, both contractors that if there's any further work, that all of that stuff needs to be done in advance and make sure that we're aware that they're going to be doing a delivery that day. So if we want to get out there, we can get out there and know for a fact that's going to happen. One of the challenges legally for us is the projects to the south, the orders of conditions that they operate under are pretty old. They're, I think the oldest one is DEP File Number 1602. We just issued out DEP File Number like 3080. So it's from about 10 to 12 years ago, some of it before. To no fault at the time, the orders of conditions that we issue now are much more comprehensive and much more detailed than what they were then. So there's a lot more having to kind of handhold and do some stuff and play some catch-up with things because they weren't just required by the permits at the time they were issued. But it is something that we, we are still actively looking at and we'll continue to provide updates as needed. And it's something that we're, we're trying to actively prevent in the future, but also making sure that we understand what's coming out and kind of doing an assessment of the eroding properties to the south there. So we know what's coming out of the bank there for sure, so we can compare it to what's being delivered to the sites or landing on the beach. I'm happy to take any questions.
I guess, uh, once you do the, you know, sort of the analysis, the forensics of this, will you be able to answer the questions that Dan sent that you were copying on? Do you think you'll have those answers?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's the intent, is to be able to answer all of those definitively and not speculate where they came from or what was there. I mean, obviously, the, the commission has already kind of instructed us now to determine that and if they need to take action to be able to have a real legal basis to take that action, then that's kind of the steps we want to make sure that we get covered.
Do we have the opportunity to update any of the older order of conditions when they renew or if they renew?
I wish we could. Some of that, it's just kind of reaching out to those guys to say, hey, we need to work better together to make sure everything knows what's happening. And as we have other projects that have newer conditions to the north in this case than the south and how we share access points or we share resources and spots and how those work together, that using kind of what's been conditioned to the north to say, you guys are just going to have to do it to the south as well, because that way if an issue does come up like this, everyone can identify what it is. So if there's work that needs to be done to correct something, we know right where to go and not trying to figure out, you know, figure the mystery out for where the work came from and what happened. Because a lot of these guys, I mean, some of the work to the north, the last time that they delivered sand to the beach was in late February, early March for the, for the GO2 project area. And then the other spots were primarily at the end of April and into May, when the bulk of their sand delivery was done. So some of that sand has been there for a bit or some of that material has been there for a bit. And then we've still had some regular surface erosion that's come down and kind of mixed together with that. So some of it's kind of sorting out the forensics of it, but it is something that we're, we're hoping to get done with, with real data and information.
I think the question was slightly different though. I think the question is, if someone hasn't exist, correct me if I'm wrong, if someone has an existing permit and then it's renewed after, you know, three years, five years, whatever the term is, do you have a chance to improve those? If you, if there are things you missed 20 years ago, 10 years ago and they renew, can you add them on then?
If, if they come in for a new application, yes. If they're simply maintaining the project as permitted, we cannot alter the existing order of conditions.
So it has to stay exactly the same?
Correct. I wish there was a way we could do it because there's a lot of projects that have happened over time that I wish we could update conditions for, not just erosion control projects.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
There's one more announcement I forgot to make earlier at the beginning and I hope people are actually still watching right now.
Awake.
Aw, and awake. We're having a real problem at some beaches with pallets this summer and there, the problems range from just the burning of them to the nails that are left behind and landbank and others have been gathering these nails and there's lots of pictures of it online. In any event, there seemed, we had a mid-season beach meeting earlier in the week with staff and there seemed to be some theory that people aren't bringing pallets out to the landfill because they have to pay for them for some reason, but they are not. They do not have to pay for them. Taking pallets to the dump is free. So please, whoever has pallets out there, please stop leaving them out in front of your store or business or whatever with a sign that says free pallets. Please take them to the landfill where they belong. Thank you. Traffic Safety Work Group recommendations. We have a number of these. I'm not sure who's taking us through. You? Mike? Transportation Planner?
Uh, the first item, A, is a citizen, was a citizen request to eliminate one public on-street parking space at 7 West Chester Street to create a new driveway with one on-street private parking place. The Traffic Safety Committee did recommend against this. I believe the applicant's here to, to ask that you reconsider the, the request. Just so you know, the rule that was used by the committee, removal of one public on-street space should result in a, two private spaces being created on a driveway and that was not the case done here. The applicant suggests that it could not be done onsite, but again, we're just applying the rule that we try to use to make a recommendation to you all. So I'll let them explain the, the balance of their argument.
I'm teasing you.
Linda Williams for the applicant, Alan Breed and the owner of the property is here and Arthur Reed is here to talk to some of the more technical issues involved with this. We made application for a curb cut. Right now, the property has absolutely no parking and it's in a two-hour parking zone and, which results many times in the applicant having to park way down the street because everybody's already parked in the two-hour parking zone. The HTC did approve it after much discussion about the retaining walls that were necessary given the change in grade. If you look at the aerial, it's more clear on the actual aerial as opposed to the GIS map, you'll see that the grade in the front is somewhere around 10 and it goes up to almost 24 and behind it on Wires Lane, which you cannot really access this property from Wires Lane to put a parking space up there. The existing house is at zero setback from Wires Lane and it's, just falls right off the cliff going down, 14 foot in an elevation change. The HTC was concerned about the retaining walls and the size of the parking area, so they limited us to 12 foot wide and a slight flare at the street so you can get in and out of the parking space. And they allowed us to have the retaining walls because there are several retaining walls, you can see from the pictures, on the site already. So if we were to have to put another space in front, they can't be side by side because the lot is so narrow. It's the narrowest lot on West Chester at that point. So you can't go side by side and you can't stack because then you would end up with probably an eight-foot retaining wall underneath the house almost in the back. It is that steep and it is that narrow. So we have a lot of mitigating factors to providing two spaces. As it is, it's only 12 feet wide, so we're reducing the on-street parking by his car, one space. We simply cannot put two spaces in there. What I understand, the trade-off of one space on the street for two onsite is a policy. It's not a rule or regulation and because we have such severe, unique situation on this one lot, exceptions can be made to the policy because we're just taking one off the street, not multiples, and we're putting one on the site. It is probably the most minimal parking space I've ever taken to the HTC. We can't, again, we can't use Wires Lane. The plantings are quite substantial on this property as well as the one at nine, which this is not involved with. The property is a separate lot. It has been a separate lot since before 1972 adoption of the zoning bylaw. It is a 1969 created lot. There was some confusion about selling it out of common ownership. It is correct that there was an owner, Sybil Goldsmith owned the whole property at one point, but it was subdivided in 1969. So it is a legally freestanding lot as irregular as the lot is. It is not tied to the lot at nine or the lot at five and it would like to have its own parking area. We've looked at all the other options coming off of Wires, trying to get two on the property and we, there is simply physically not another way to put it on. and we, there is simply physically not another way to put it on. So we would like you to do it in this particular case because of the mitigating circumstances, so it doesn't create a precedent for other people coming in that that easily provide two spaces. We simply physically cannot do that.
Again, for the record, Attorney Arthur Reed, representing the owners of the property, Alan Breed, who is here, and his brother, Taylor Breed. First of all, uh, one point that was made about Wires Lane, the property does have but Wires Lane, but it has no rights in Wires Lane. It would be impractical to get a parking space in from Wires Lane, in any event, because of the location of the building, uh, and the topography and retaining walls that exist on the property and so on. But there actually, as a matter of title, has no, uh, the property has no rights in Wires Lane. As Linda indicated, uh, I think there'd been some confusion that this might have been a recently created lot. This lot has been a separate lot with a house on it, separate from the house on the adjacent property, uh, since it was subdivided, uh, by plan drawn in 1969 and recorded in 1970. As Linda indicated also, we're dealing with what we understand to be a policy, not a formally adopted rule. I think it makes all the sense in the world where it's practical for the, um, owner who is eliminating a parking space to provide additional parking spaces on the site, so it's a net gain. But where that's not possible, uh, and that, and it really is not possible here because of the, uh, location, uh, because of the topography, uh, if, if you dealt with putting a second parking space on the lot, uh, it would have to be a stacked space because of the narrowness of the lot and the fact, and the fact that the HTC approval is only for a 12-foot opening. Uh, the, uh, a stacked space would wind up with the lot having to be graded to a point where you would need an eight-foot high or thereabouts retaining wall at, going toward the back, uh, in the area just in front of the house itself. And, uh, I don't think that, uh, that remotely would be approved by the HTC nor frankly should it be. I'll let, uh, my client just express to you the frustrations that they have with the fact that, uh, the, the house does not have, um, a parking space on the lot. Uh, and, uh, again, we would ask you under these unusual circumstances, uh, I, I think that all the logic involved in this situation would indicate that as is required under the zoning bylaw for, for a, uh, uh, for, for a property with a single-family house, that it'd have an off-street parking space on the lot. And, uh, I know that at least one of the members of the, uh, Traffic Safety Committee had commented that when you can get a parking space off the street, you could do that. I know the vote was different, that was based solely, as I understand it, on this, uh, on wanting to stick to the policy. I understand that if you have a policy, you want to try to stick to it, but again, the ultimate decision-making on this is with the Board of Selectmen, with the Select Board, and we ask you to take into consideration the, uh, the logic involved in being able to create a, a separate parking space. Alan?
We had to put a lot of photographs and everything into the HTC as well as the landscaping plan and the walls and everything else. And what we found when we did a review of that section of Westchester on both sides, almost all those houses down in North Liberty and beyond have their own parking space. This is one of the only ones that does not have its own parking space. And several of those parking spaces are a result of HTC approval because they've either hadn't had one before or they enlarged it, or they were doing construction on these houses. There'd been a lot of activity in that strip. So most of them have them, except for this one, and this one's a rather unique situation compared to the rest of them where the houses are forward, actually on the street, and they're a little bit more level, um, as you go west and as you go east.
Good evening, Alan Breed. Arthur and Linda have spoken a lot about the details and, you know, I think our, our view from my brother and I is, um, downtown Nantucket is unique. There's a lot of charm, there's a lot of character, there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of complexity. And we're working to solve a jigsaw puzzle to get a car off the street, uh, and at the same time have the least impact to, to the neighborhood and the community, uh, from a visual perspective. Uh, we don't want to create a brand parking, um, complex. We want to have a discreet area where we can get a vehicle off the street. Happy to take questions or, or they can as well, but, um, appreciate your, your attention to this and given it's a, a unique lot in a, in sort of a, not your typical new development or development.
Comments? Questions?
I'll start. So, being relatively new, has something like this come up before recently where they weren't able to put a second car on the lot?
We don't get this that, that often. Mike, can you think, think of the last time?
I'm not prepared to say specific examples, but it has happened and we've typically recommended against for that reason. We have had plans resubmitted that showed the ability to accommodate an additional. Again, it's reducing demand for public parking spaces. No, that's, that's really the justification of it at all. And we've had landscape architects, architects, whoever revise the plans to accommodate the extra vehicle when they can. Uh, they're, uh, we're told at Traffic Safety that that's just not a possibility, so, uh, here we are.
How many spaces were in that one that we did on Ash?
Oh, that was, uh...
Because it was so, it was so tight, we had to eliminate the parking space across the street.
Yeah, that was, they had one space, yes.
Can I just ask, um, I think from the notes it said that a curb cut was already approved? And I, I just want to know as well if when the property was purchased, if somehow there was an expectation that you would be getting a parking space or if you bought the property as is with no parking space and subsequently a curb cut was approved?
The, that's a little confusing. Um, they bought it with no space, they had no anticipation of the space. Now they're, you know, sort of trying to regularize the property. What had happened is that I submitted the curb cut application, I had clearly checked off, yes, it does require elimination of an on-street parking space, so there was no subterfuge there. And I was submitted it to Erica and Mike and was supposed to be, sent it out to the DPW. The person at the DPW, it wasn't Rob, the person at the DPW looked at it and automatically signed it. So we do have an approved situation, but we are well aware that we really, we need to have, uh, the Board of, you know, the Select Board ratify that particular error and sending it back with an okay signature, even though it shouldn't have come back to me with an okay signature. Because they have a, a process out of the DPW that if it does require, um, Select Board approval, they can't sign it until they get the Select Board approval. But it was sent back to a signed, but we're not claiming anything on that at the moment.
Okay, so that was just an error in the process that exists?
Yeah, because they should have held on to it until all of this worked its way out.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't get, I don't think we get a lot of these now because almost everyone that could, uh, could turn their gardens and side yards into parking yards has done so. I mean, if you walk around the downtown now, it's, you know, when they talk about a net gain, there's never a net gain when you lose garden space and turn it into places for two, three, 5,000-pound vehicles. You know, our downtown is not nearly what it used to be. Part, even the, even the, uh, you know, the Whaley Museum turned their side, their beautiful side yard into a parking lot. And why have they done that? They did that because we didn't take parking seriously. We didn't value parking downtown, so neighbors were getting pushed out of their own, and they're still getting pushed out of their own neighborhoods. He probably wouldn't be coming here if he could actually have the ability to park within a reasonable walking distance of his property. But since we think that parking is free and people can park as long as they want in a two-hour zone all day long with very little enforcement, this is what, this is the unfortunate result of that. We've, you know, we buried our head in the sand. This board hasn't, but on previous boards I was on, we buried our head in the sand on this topic since the 60s. And, and now, you know, these are the things that happen. We've lost, as, as a community, we have lost, uh, you know, so much of our downtown fabric, so much of our, you know, those yards and the gardens that were there for, you know, 50 years. And, and it's, and I, I just, it's just really sad to me. The one that you're talking about was the house I grew up on. It didn't need that. You were able to park near your house, you know? And, and the people that are, yeah, so anyway, I could go on forever, but I, I just, I feel, you know, I feel, you know, I feel pretty strongly that, you know, we need to get on with, you know, a parking commission and on with, you know, valuing parking and charging people to do it and changing attitudes. And one of the attitudes it has to change is that parking is free and it's a right. It really isn't for any of us. We all have to change how we do things. Anyway, I'm sorry.
We're trying to preserve the foliage on the property as well.
No, I just...
Maybe there's three choices. There's go along with traffic safety, deny it, approve it, or the third option is to see what the HTC says and ask for two.
It would be detrimental on the property to actually cut into it that far. We'd be under the other, under the house, basically.
I'm talking to them about asking to see if the HTC says, no, sorry, we don't like the retaining wall, we don't approve it. I'm just saying, just trying to give us some structure for three choices so we can not be here till 11 o'clock.
The only, and the only issue I have is I don't know if Mr. Breed has two cars. I actually think the policy, I don't know, thinking in light of our strategic plan, taking, encouraging two cars if they only have one and losing, um, one public, I think there may be a bit of a flaw in the policy in terms of trying to reduce the amount of cars on island. So I, I think that would be, I mean, I think, having gone through the HTC process with retaining walls that size, it's significant and it's difficult and the underpinning and the engineering.
So it's not, I'm pretty sure it's not going to pass.
I don't even know, I mean, and I think, you know, yeah, if you had two cars, it seems like you might have one. Again, I just, and I think you're taking out...
I wouldn't support asking for two cars, two cars there because of the size of the lot and the impact it would have. It's, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna allow it, it should be one small space that's as in, you know, inconspicuous as possible.
I, I will say, I am up and down Westchester Street a lot. It is a very difficult street in terms of two cars passing. Actually, getting a other, another place where you could curve over a little bit is, is somewhat helpful and getting that car that lives in the neighborhood off the street. I do worry that, you know, then this house can get off-street parking spaces to park as additional cars as long as they want in a two-hour zone. But that's an issue with every house in town at the moment. And I think that we've got to get a handle on providing the people who work downtown all day some solutions in terms of practical parking or practical bus service. Because we're, we're not, we're not there yet in terms of re, of really fixing the shuffle of moving your car every two hours, and it's really apparent.
It's pretty dramatic on that strip, that two-hour parking, watching the cars move around.
Yeah, it's also that, I, I walk there fairly often. I did a lot of rehab there when I hit, my hip's done. You can't go down those sidewalks. So the cars aren't parked on the street, they're parked up on the sidewalk, ruining all the old sidewalks. So it's, it's one, you know, it's a, you know, they're, they're moving over as far as they can so they don't get hit, but, you know, so, so there's really no...
But it opened, it does open up the street a little bit to have the curb cut there for 12 feet.
Just to see where I, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the parking spot.
It's for a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I guess I'm torn. I just, I think we've, you know, and not that this should actually impact this decision at all, but just removing, um, public spaces by a lot, by 27 or by one, etching away at it. I know I was on the board that made the decision about Ash Street, um, but I just don't know, you know, I think there were some, one, they did already have the curb cut. Again, I think that process, to me, that process is a little bit unfair, and I know this was an error that was identified fairly quickly, but I think Ash Street, they'd gone further down the road with that. So, um, I, I just really don't want to lose more public parking. And, and I also think this is a lose-lose situation because at this point I don't know what the best way is to encourage less car use. Is it get a space, a private space and, you know, reduce the public spacing or is it leave the public? I don't know, so I'm torn.
I mean, hopefully it leaves this car that lives there from circulating all around and just pulling into their parking space.
But some other one is going to do that.
Here's a question. Do you guys, are you seasonal? You and your brother, are you here yourselves all summer or?
Oh, you'll need to come to the mic, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, we are here for the summer. I actually was sitting here, I looked back at my calendar and from last September to this September, um, either my wife or I will have spent 115 days here and my brother, um, maybe 10 or, 10 or 15 more. Sometimes there's overlap.
Well, you have, so you'll have one vehicle that you guys leave on island?
Yes, we have one vehicle that lives here. Um, we're, we're here a lot, my parents are buried here, so it's a...
Do you, here's a question. Do you rent your, were you rented on the weeks you're not here?
Either we're there or, yeah, we, yes.
It'll be a rental home for the weeks you're not here?
Yes. It's either rented or we're there or we have friends or family.
Because that opens another can of worms. We've had, we had to, uh, because what happens when you rent is your renters don't want your car there. So then your car has to move. And so what we had happen on Sunset Hill was we had to extend, we had to extend the parking, uh, area past Sunset because renters would move their cars to places that weren't, you know, next to the oldest house, where cars parked there so with, from homeowners. And I'm not saying you guys did this, but one of the issues we're dealing with as a board is people will find areas where they can park that aren't enforced so that they could, then the renters can drive onto the island and park in the parking lot, in the parking space right next to the house. And so we had to, you know, extend it, and that's going to happen again in a few areas because if you walk around now, you can see other places that this is happening now, where cars are parking all day for weeks at a time. So, you know, so it's, it's another issue with, you know, that we're dealing with is a lot of these homes are used as tourist homes and therefore the private car that you leave has to go find another place.
Well, one, one of, um, one of the reasons people that when we're not there like to rent it is we're in town, you don't have to bring your car, it's, that's $500 you're saving at a minimum, plus the headache and the hassle. People really love, because you truly can walk in and out from there very conveniently.
No, it's a, it's a great spot. I live around the corner. It's, it's one of the best places on the island, but...
And we do the same thing. Our house is about the same distance from town on, my uncle's house on Union Street, and we tell the people, do not bring a car. You don't need a car, don't bring it.
There is more advising, stay in town and don't bring a car.
Yeah, I know.
There's, no, there's a lot more people saying it in the service industry. But we do have a motion on the, are we ready for a vote or is there further discussion?
I'm just feeling really torn, like Rita, kind of, I hate when we say Nantucket's unique and I hate saying a unique situation, but, you know, hearing that this hasn't really come up a lot and there's no room to put the second spot, it's really difficult to enforce the policy and maybe this is the one exception. That's just kind of what I'm trying to get through.
Is there anything that can help?
I'll try to help. I'd rather see one, I'd rather see none or one than two. You know, I'd rather see, you know, visually and, you know, and for walking that street, I'd rather see if we're gonna do any, you know? Unless we're gonna deny it, I think that you're better off having one than two, but...
Okay, let's go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I, no.
So how do you guys?
I'm opposed, yeah.
Kristy?
No.
I'm in favor. It passes.
Thank you very much. I'll try to make it as inconspicuous as possible.
Next.
All right, uh, item B under, uh, this item is, uh, York Street between Pleasant Street and South Mill Street. Uh, the, uh, request was to install the O line to prohibit, uh, on-street parking along the north side of, uh, York Street between Pleasant Street and South Mill Street. Uh, the rationale here is parking is allowed on the south side of York Street. Uh, the roadway itself is only 17 feet wide when someone does park on the south side of the, the road, the...
road, the road is reduced to one lane, parking on both sides of the road. I guess some of the people that do park along the north side of the road may need to park in the street, narrows the street down, probably below useful standards, especially for the pedestrian traffic that circulates along the road, which does not have a sidewalk in that section. So we would request just go ahead and extending that yellow line all the way down to South Mill Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously on that one.
Next item is Federal Street at Main Street. This request is to install a no standing, no parking any time signage along Federal Street next to the hub. Again, this is where we have a very narrow roadway and this section of no parking is used for deliveries, live parking. The bylaw does allow 15-minute standing, but this signage would prohibit the ability to stand and use that 15-minute grace period.
So right now it's just 15 minutes? It's not a loading zone or anything right now?
It's no parking, but the bylaw provides 15 minutes of grace period.
But it's used as kind of a loading zone sometimes.
Who's kidding who? Right, yeah.
And that's really blocking.
What's that? Yeah.
What I saw there today on the opposite side of the street was a truck double parked facing Main Street, not on the side that you're talking about, but the other side with the front facing Main Street unloading there. So, you know, and there's a loading zone right across Main Street that they can pull into and use if they get there at the right time, but they, they were all over the place.
And there's one right around the corner across from the post office. The other place that is a huge issue, and I see like FedEx trucks always stopping there is on the side of the Nobby, the old Nobby shop. And they're blocking an entire lane of traffic. It's, it's horrible.
There's not enough spaces, there's not enough places for, for delivery. But this, this is a, I think I'm for this unless there's other objections.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining. We pull up and drive there.
Deliver breads, you're there?
We deliver drinks, so whatever.
Did you actually recuse them?
Recuse, whatever. Yeah. Yeah, I'm abstaining. It's, it's not a big deal, we have a place to go, it's.
Abstaining because you don't have enough information?
Put whatever the word is, I'm tired.
This is apparently a reaffirm, reaffirmation, did I say that right?
Of High Street?
Of removing parking on both sides of High Street. Again, this is, that section of High Street is used for inbound and outbound bike traffic. It's a, it's an historic bike route. There's a lot of conflicts along this section of road with on-street parking along both sides of the road and the, the flow of bike traffic. So again, asking you to support.
Can I make a suggestion? This is, I, I looked at this a lot in BPAC years ago and maybe we could bring this back and I don't think we're gonna make any changes in the middle of summer, bring it back in the fall and have BPAC look at it, rewalk it and dig in. I mean, Traffic Safety looked at it, which is.
As did BPAC.
Yeah.
Both recommendations.
I feel like we're gonna be here, we'd be here.
We'd be here all night.
Along night talk.
We should push this to another day.
Revisiting this, so I don't mind if we, if we table it and BPAC can look at it again, if that's all right, it's a suggestion.
Then a motion?
Sure, that's my motion.
Great.
Yes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next.
Thank you. Item E is designate Airport Road, Monahan City Road, Okawa Avenue, Lover's Lane Boulevard as no parking either side from Old South Road to Surfside Road.
Has this been a regular problem? Are people using it? Are people parking on the side of the road regularly?
It, it has been at the time that we made the recommendation. I'm, I'm sure enforcement's been, been greater, the problem has subsided, but still it, it's not designated, there's no parking either side, so it probably should be.
I will note too that the person who proposed this on traffic safety was very concerned about the town's brand-new infrastructure. We're building brand-new, you know, multi-use paths and people are parking all over them, basically ruining the integrity of our brand-new infrastructure, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is designating a section of Pulpus Road from Milestone Road to Shimopon Road as no parking or standing. Again, this is the spirit of the same Main Street issue. Again, there's a problem along a section of Pulpus Road that, I guess due to inspection, vehicle inspections, that the southeast side of Pulpus Road is basically used for storage of vehicles waiting in line. So this is to address that issue.
I'd like to comment on that. I, I understand the spirit of this, that it's causing a traffic safety problem, but we actually have a facilitating inspections problem. And I think we've gotta have a solution to that before we eliminate the space where people are trying to queue or we need to embrace it and clear that shoulder so that people can queue because the, the inspections have been an absolute nightmare. People have been waiting five hours to get an inspection. And what are they supposed to do? Just keep driving around and coming back to it and?
Every year, I get there 15 minutes before they open up. You have to do that.
No, but they change the rules. It takes longer for every vehicle now and even longer for the commercial vehicle. I just wanna make sure that there is a solution to provide the necessary service, the only one on the island with the ability.
I will note too that there's actually ample shoulder area on this side of the road, but there's been some issues between the parties that face off towards each other and there's been some mechanisms put over here so people can't park over there. So I'm just throwing that out there.
And where's the actual road layout? I mean, is that town property that we're talking about? Because we have the ability to clear that and allow the use of it for, I don't think it should be allowed for parking, but I think we might need to accommodate some standing for this, this issue before we just say, okay, no, we're putting up no parking signs tomorrow, no standing signs tomorrow, when there's, I mean, this is a really big problem, the inspection situation.
I think that makes sense, Don.
But could they, I mean, how far does the town have to go to figure out the problem? Could they do it by appointment? Could they clear out some of the cars that are there for sale right now? Are there other things that could be done? I, I don't, I just don't know if that's been looked into or not. If, if we think that it's okay to park or stand, cars on the side of the road, maybe they're not, maybe it's a month or two months, that's the real big problem, but even if they're off the road a bit, they're, I think they're complaining is that they're still there and they are a hazard.
Can I ask a question? What happens if Don Allen just says, yeah, we're not doing it anymore?
Exactly.
Do, do we have to? I mean, do we have to offer it? Is it, will the town have to take it over or we have to go all go off island? I'm just, I'm, alright, something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna force Don Allen into a situation where we're saying, well, you, you've gotta move the cars that you sell to be able to provide this inspection service that they make 30, was $35 per car.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Kinda slow this down. We should be doing no passing on this road right here. But anyway, there's a, there's two companies that come here to do stickers for the commercial trucks, the big stuff. It's huge money, like 200 bucks apiece. Yeah, so that's the appointment stuff, crazy. This is an issue, I can, I, I've been watching it all summer. I haven't gotten a sticker for three months. I do it on a Saturday, I just drive around with a rejection sticker because the line's so big, I'd be there all day, I can't get anything done. Imagine making an appointment for a sticker? Now, they also lost some help, I heard that.
They hired somebody.
Did they just hire someone? Okay.
That's what I heard.
You know, Eric has been out there, Eric Evans has been directing traffic himself in the street, running around trying to like mitigate, I've, I've seen it, it's unbelievable. So I kinda tend to think that this needs to be looked at. I don't know what the answer is, but what's the layout? Good question. I mean, I don't think they should be putting rocks in the road or whatever they're doing to block cars from parking in the road layout. This is sort of like a mini Cisco Brewer issue ten years ago for two months.
It's also, you're seeing it with some of the marijuana dispensaries. And what they're doing is they have live feeds where you can see, I mean, I do the same thing. I drive by, if it's available, I pop in if it's not, but I think that, I just think I, I would like to have the opportunity to ask the question if there's some sort of simple, what is it?
Common sense?
Appointment, appointments. Even if it's only for May, June, and July, I think when, there's probably a bump in all the seasonals getting their, their inspections done. I, I don't know how we do that, if we can do that, but that to me seems like a first step before clearing, before making all these other accommodations, just see if we can do an appointment schedule. I think it would be, I would prefer an appointment schedule rather than circling.
I would prefer that too, but I think the conversation needs to be had with Don Allen's before we put up these, put up signs and just shut it all down.
I spent the last two afternoons, yesterday afternoon, the day before, out there for about an hour and a half each with two vans and it was moving relatively quickly, it wasn't out on the street. I haven't ever seen it backed out onto the street. And they had, they had two people, it has been probably, they have two people working now, I can tell, they had two bays open and it moved fairly quickly. And I asked Eric and he said the busiest time was the last three months. So we may be, we may be through it, who knows?
Well, it, it does have a tendency to pick up when people come back for the winter and realize their cars expired.
And all the, all the employees that start and their car, they haven't been here, it's the whole thing.
So I'll make a motion to the table with continued conversation with Don Allen and seeking other options.
And with the, with the road layout and other options, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And obviously bring that back in the, in the fall, winter.
As soon as we can figure it out. It just, I, I don't wanna shut down something that's a really active operation right now.
Well, the roll fund stuff, make changes regarding loading zones. The first loading zone recommendation is relocating a loading zone on Broad Street at Center Street to the north side of Broad Street, east of the existing mid-block crosswalk and relocating the mid-block crosswalk from where it's currently located to the west side of Broad Street at Federal Street intersection. So this is just a relocation of the existing 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM loading zone to the mid-block, basically in, in front of the Brotherhood instead of at the corner of Broad and Center Street.
What's the rationale for this? Did someone ask or what, did the committee come up with this idea themselves or what's?
That section was already being used for a lot of loading and unloading where it's proposed to go and, well, fire's not here, so they can't answer. I believe fire had an issue with maybe blocking that throat of Broad Street at the intersection. So by shifting it, relocating it, the idea was that it was at a more productive location to reach more restaurants and you didn't overly narrow the roadway and make that right-hand turn onto Broad Street too difficult.
I've seen a lot of issues with trucks not parking properly and then other vehicles can't get around them on that corner, so that makes sense, but the, the change of the crosswalk, what's the rationale for that?
There's right now no crosswalk at all at the Federal Street end of, of the block. And the idea was that that was probably a preferable location. The, the mid-block crossing is, is very narrow.
Line of sight.
Line of sight issues, all the, all the above, and basically it spills onto a curb, there are driveway curb cuts, it opens up to, it's not an ADA ramp, so that was just to address that issue. And the idea is you may be able with the elimination of that eight-foot, 10-foot wide gap, maybe squeeze a smaller car in, maybe realize additional parking space out of all this.
Sorry, for the record, this is like my other life, this stuff. This has been, this section of what Mike is talking about, we've gone on for about a year and a half, would you say, of Grayden House. There's been some, some, well, quite a bit of work on this. So that little crosswalk thing here to eliminate this is great. I'll explain, I think all of us have seen, cars stop right here, you lose about a half of space, then it, over here in this old curb cut from back in the days of coal delivering is sort of like that, this little unused, unnecessary crosswalk to nowhere where a car can't park here that could, okay? Now, this is what I call the sneaky loading zone that Cisco uses to use, when they pull the ramp out, it's right in that little driveway cut that only one vehicle parks or two here every day, that's it. There's no real traffic in here. It works really well when they use it. The Grayden House, there's no real loading zone area that makes any sense down there, so this helps them run down the street to get to them without blocking North Water Street. Now, this is where I'm gonna sort of wrinkle this here. This loading zone here used to be here. It got moved back here about 20 years ago, maybe 25 years ago or so. This really works well right here. It very seldom is this, is a truck blocking, this is a big area here at the Seven Seas, it's a huge spot, they park all over the place here to deliver. I talked to these guys that deliver a lot and I'll tell you something else I did in the next segment. I suggest leaving this or maybe making it a little shorter because they kinda need two loading zones in the street. Maybe we could change the time, make that maybe earlier or make that earlier, like two here and leave this at four, something like that. Because once those larger trucks are done delivering around, around 2:00, then you have the smaller FedEx, the smaller Cape Cod's, the stuff that comes on trucks that gets taken off other trucks. That's my suggestion. When this was two-way, a complete nightmare. This one-way here, when it was done one 10 years ago, Mike, is when, one of the smartest decisions we've ever made as a town without hiring a consultant, unbelievable. And we kinda forget how bad it used to be. It's really good. Somebody came up with this idea, I don't know who did, but it is some good.
Catherine Stover.
Was she? Is it her idea? I didn't know that.
I don't know if it was her idea, but she, she championed it.
Cause I don't know why we didn't do it in like the 70s, but anyway, so that's my suggestion, Mike.
Yeah, I do have a, have a question about that existing loading zone and whether we're a little bit worried about that bakery's reopening and the taprooms reopening.
Yeah.
Do we, does one end at like noon? I don't know.
Just talking to the delivery drivers, I think 4:00 is really the reasonable time to, to do that. And this, and that's absolutely right, this is a busy area, deliveries that they stop everywhere around the Center Street, Broad Street intersection, around the hotel. You know, when they need to stop and make a delivery, they stop and make a delivery where they can. And this is basically just trying to accommodate where they're doing it. That does, you'd lose about two or three parking spaces by, by doing that, but again, it probably stops the illegal parking and, and loading and unloading because out of necessity, but.
This is, the delivery is very different than it was 25 years ago. There used to be Steve Embidian with one large truck with a ramp on the back and everyone else was in sort of the smaller jobs that would fit in here. Over the last, you know, sort of 10 years, the trucks have grown, the timeframes that they come into town has changed and they're, they're there all the time. They're there at 2:00 in the afternoon blocking Federal Street. And so, you know, so something that, we, this is a, you know, we're not gonna solve that issue tonight, but, you know, when it was three-quarter sized trucks, they'd fit, pull into either of these, no problem, not block anything, but what's happening now isn't that. You know, it's, it's kind of the Wild West and these guys are parking wherever they can, up on the sidewalk, next to the Nobby shop, you know, we're gonna be talking about here, they don't use it cause it's, they, they get as close as they can to these places. So there's, there's some other issues that have to be dealt with. It can be done effectively if they come at the right times and in the right vehicles, but that's not what's happening right now, in my opinion.
Too much to deliver.
Well, exactly, too much to deliver, the world's changed, Amazon's here, manager, it's.
Yes, yeah, this is.
The truck that Stevie drove is still the same one, the 38-foot, 20, it's a 28-foot trailer, totally 38 feet long, 10 feet with the ramp is 48.
Okay.
It's just, they're not getting bigger, they're just the same size.
You guys could debate this all night.
No, my point is he was the only one. That's my, that's my point, you're making my point, he was the only one.
Matt, it's way past 9:00, way past 9:00.
If we approve, if we approve this, would it be done this summer or in the fall? It depends on. Alright, so we don't know that. So I'm definitely making a motion to move the crosswalk, 100% back that.
I'll second that.
I'm just trying to get that out of the way.
Yeah, I'm hoping we do that.
Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote? Sorry. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So.
I, I guess I'm a little bit confused because we're not losing a loading zone. I think what you're saying is we need, or, I, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying now. I, I do think though that the traffic safety recommendation, they've looked at it as a group. Um, we're not losing loading. We're just moving it around the corner to split the difference between these different businesses they're trying to service. And I think they're still go, like you were saying, they're still gonna park other places even without the loading zone. So I, I think this makes, this looks like a sensible move, but I, I guess, yeah, I'm a little confused. We're not losing loading.
I, I just want to mention, I think there's a lot of time that's been spent internally with traffic safety to figure out where the loading zones are best utilized. We all see them parking not in a loading zone. That's either because you can't get in there because of the way they're configured or somebody's already in it, so they park wherever. So this situation is designed, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, to allow the trucks to get in easier. So they're more attractively used.
Correct?
I'd make a motion to approve just to see where people are at.
Sir, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
I, I didn't vote on it. I'm not, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I'm voting against it. I'd like to really look at the whole issue. I think it's gotten out of hand and, uh, and we need to make some more, you know, we need to figure out what the right way to handle it is, so.
And I'm sorry for your.
Four to, four to one.
That was to move, um, move the loading zone, not to have both, right?
Correct. And we're just voting on number one.
Yeah.
We're doing two, uh.
Can we do two and three?
Absolutely. They're, they're actually pretty, uh, related. Um, the, uh, item number two is to designate the existing on-street parking on South Beach Street Extension as a loading zone from eight AM to four PM. Uh, that would essentially lengthen the existing loading zone that's there now. And, and I'll add substandard, which is actually causing the issue by, there's a, a driveway there, a parking lot that's being blocked by that substandard length, uh, loading zone. Uh, the rationale is to, uh, use those th- three parking spaces, use that whole section as a loading zone. And to eliminate the loading zone, which is item number three, eliminate the, uh, existing loading zone on Oak Street between South Water Street and South Beach Street, which currently has two parking spaces. This would consolidate the loading zone into, to the, the one alleyway, uh, South Beach's exten, extension. And this sacrifices one public parking space. And it removes the conflicts at the driveway, which has really been the, uh, the annual complaint that we've gotten and hopefully this addresses that.
What would, um, Rosa Crown Walters, everybody around there say? Would they want this?
No, I think Erica knows the, 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 the ballot, uh, vote on this around the neighborhood. But we do have a lot of the, the butters that, that did speak for this. Uh, all the butters were invited to participate into, uh, weighing in on this and, uh, basically spent the entire afternoon waiting that. It wasn't very well attended. But, uh, uh, we did have a, an email with a number of different signatories that live in this area that, all from the same building that kind of want this. I, I wouldn't say that we're from multiple buildings, but.
Yeah.
And across the street from the building, we're in support of it.
What actually happens on South Beach is they don't use the loading zones anyway. They just stop in the middle of South Beach and do what they have to do. And that is used, that street itself is used as a loading street. So this isn't gonna change anything, taking away Oak Street. I don't, that doesn't get used all that often. So I don't, you know, that's not a, whatever.
But if they park in the middle of the street now, if, but there's a loading zone, they park in the middle of the street now because people park there. So if there's a loading zone there, uh, maybe they would be more likely to park in the loading zone rather than in the middle of the street. That's the hope.
I'd like getting part, regular parking back on Oak Street.
This is the major reason here. Okay? This is, this is my little favorite loading zone. And about five years ago, this proposal came in, exactly the same proposal. Well, this wasn't here yet, so I got my tape measure out. It is exactly forty-eight feet from there to there. That is exactly how long a pup trailer is with the ramp out. It's two-way right here. This little section of Oak Street is two-way. When a pup trailer pulls through here and this space is not used, they can turn and park without ever backing up. Same here. Boom, parked. The simplest delivery in the world happens from right here. But this loading zone is not year-round and it never really got, I could say delineated, striped, whatever. It, your people don't even know it's a loading zone. This still gets used by cars occasionally. Smaller delivery trucks end up here sometimes. Couple, about three weeks ago, a truck was parked, exactly what Matt just said, not in the middle of the road, but here. Cause there's no place to go. He had two dollies and he was running. And I got out of my truck, grabbed the dolly and ran with him together. I walked, he ran and went over to Charlie Noble's all the way over here. And I talked to him about this the whole time because he's a new driver. There's a bunch of new guys this year. This, if you eliminate this parking, you're gonna have a, it's a blowout with a lot of people here, number one. But that isn't the reason to, to, to not do this. Trucks can't back up into this. Like you pull in here, it's very tight. This is like an alley. This isn't really even a functioning street. Try, a pup trailer parks here and this is all open. They can't, another one can't like jiggle itself in there. It's not gonna be like two trucks parked here. Just because it's long doesn't mean it's gonna work that way. Uh, my, my suggestion is we gotta work with this owner. That's not Champion's anymore. I don't believe it, Don. I think he sold it, didn't he?
Yeah, it closed like a, with the last couple of weeks.
This street is a seventeen ninety-nine road. That's why those flower pots are there. I sat in his house and talked to him about this for a half an hour, like three years ago. I couldn't believe the stuff he told me. And I'm like, we need to work out something with him. This parking here, it's the worst planning board decision ever on the Antucket. Shouldn't even be there, but that's another story. It is, you can't fix it. But that's why this doesn't work because this parking should be a street. This loading zone here is a, basically a dumpster removal spot. It isn't really a loading zone for big trucks. It's never been. When Vincent's was there, it's exactly the same as it was thirty years ago. My suggestion is to look at maybe moving this back a little bit, possibly. I talked to the juice bar people about getting their motorcycles out of the street, parked here all day for free without ticketing. And keep this and try to get a, a sort of a conversation with improving this area some other way. I, I just, it's not gonna fix it. I just don't know what the answer is. This is almost an unfixable spot. It, 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 it's like Independence Alley. It's like, how do you fix it? They get in there and they sort of make their delivery and they have to pull back out onto Federal Street because you can't go through Obadiah's Way. So I don't know. I don't have an answer. I just know that this isn't the answer. This loading zone needs to be identified more because it's not.
I don't ever see anybody using that.
They use it, but not all the time.
And I, I didn't.
The one in front of Dreamland is great, by the way. That's improved the area a lot because it does get used, but it's also noticeably a loading zone. Like you, you know it is. You can be, you know.
And you can always drop off your kids at the movies.
That's a loading zone. But over here, that looks like parking if you look at it quickly.
But the, part of the reason they don't do it though now is they can pull over, double park right in front of the Rosen Crown. If you go, if you have a truck.
They don't pack in, the only truck that packs in the road is the pizza, is Crispy Pizza.
Cape Cod Express with the beer. There's a bunch of them that do it. And there's a bunch to do and they should go here, but they don't because it's easier to pull right in front of the door. So the reason they're not using this, in my opinion, is that it's too far away. The guy you saw is an anomaly.
But it's off flush though. They don't, they can walk, they, no.
But I know, but if, but if, are they gonna do that if they can park right in, in front next to it and just roll it in? I mean, they're not.
I just don't want, you know, this is a lot of work.
Madam Chair, motion to deny.
Sir, second?
Is that two and three?
Yeah.
And so you're basically deny, leave it as it is and work on it?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Just to see where we're at.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm abstaining. I don't have enough information.
I'll vote in favor. Four to zero. Okay.
Yeah, I would like to hear.
That wraps that up. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. I think we beat ten o'clock. Great.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Any really super quick committee reports?
I have so many because it's been three weeks, but I'll hold most of them. The only thing I really wanted to touch base on was we had the Senior Citizens Award and I just wanted to thank again Jeanette Topham and Peter Richards because they just do amazing work for the community and I was really honored to present the awards to them at the end of the month. And I just took a landfill tour and I'm very excited for the Way Summit tomorrow, so. I'll save the rest of my updates for two weeks from now, but just wanted to put those two.
I did think our forum on Monday was really great at the Athenaeum. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They did a really good job.
Yep.
Um, and it looks like we will be doing an, another Dreamland in, on August nineteenth.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
Thank you, everyone.